Hello and welcome, everybody. This is the fourth work session budget of the Town of South Kingstown. The date is March 10th, 2010. And we are joined tonight for our fourth budget work session with the school committee. Tonight, the Town Council and school committee will be talking about the agenda items of the school committee's recommended February 11th, 2010 budget proposal. The town manager is to present budget landscape factors. Town manager is also to present budget message concerns relative to the school committee recommended budget. School committee is to address the actions to address the supplemental year 10 potential COLA shortfalls. The actions to address the governor's year 2011 potential COLA shortfalls. And general discussion relative to the education aid formula. Town manager is to explain the components and impact, and the school superintendent to explain long-term implications. Then, we will take comments and questions from the public. So, welcome, everybody. Welcome to the school committee. And we will start by turning it over to Dr. Kristen Stringfellow, who will present an overview of the F-10 school budget. Yeah, I might pull that closer to you, Kristen, just so we can get it. Is there everybody at home?
No. Are your shorts on?
Yes.
Yes, now it is. Next. I'll go like this. This will be our clue. Thank you so much for having us this evening. I'm going to start with a chronology of the budget process. And it's going to end up talking about the current issues that we're facing. This budget, the superintendent's budget as preliminarily created, was developed with several factors in mind. It was the fourth budget developed to fit within the state's property tax cap. And as you know, the property tax cap legislation, the PIPA-weed Act, Senate 3050 prohibits more than a 4.5 percent increase in the dollar amount received the previous year from the town. And given the current economic situation in the nation, the state, and the community, the current climate makes it even more difficult to get the revenue available under the tax cap. We knew when we were formulating the budget that we were facing a potential mid-year reduction in aid. Next. Can I have a slide on that? We also had to take into consideration several expenditure assumptions. We are working in the third year with our collective bargaining agreements. One more year expiring in 2011. And I've been asked to provide some of the dollar amounts that would be associated with those expenditures. We have three collective bargaining units. We have NEASK, ESP, and Council 94. And together, the salary increase amount for this year is $885,000. And that does not include teacher step requirements that are required by law. We have recently used a $500,000 turnover allowance, making an assumption that $500,000 worth of staff members will either retire, or go on leave, or resign, so that when we recapture new employees, it's an assumption that most of those new employees will be hired on at a lower rate. We have materials expenditure. Our P accounts that our principals use for materials and supplies previously each year were increased by approximately 3 percent, because as you can imagine, items cost more. This year, our expenditure assumption in the beginning was that they remain flat. Utilities increased by 5 percent, approximately $40,000. Healthcare increased by 10 percent, approximately $689,000. Insurance increased by 5 percent, approximately $15,000. Transportation, 4 percent, which is $130,000. And pension, 1.6, in the amount of $91,000. Our original revenue assumptions, and this is an assumption that has changed significantly. As of December 2009, we were budgeting for 3 percent reduction in state aid. And the council advised us at our first budget workshop that we could expect a budget assumption of a 2 percent increase on local revenue. Next. This chart shows our district full-time equivalent employees from 2006 to a projected 10, 11 year. Total administrators has gone from 21.5 to 20.5. Certified teachers, 380 to 346. Non-certified folks, who are the teacher assistants, the clerks, and custodians, et cetera, are 208, have gone to 181, which shows our total full-time equivalents from 610 to 549. Next. And this is a chart that, albeit not jumping off the screen in color, that shows the top line is our total FTEs. And as you know, this, they're in a downward trend. Next. This is our charter school enrollments. In 2004, we had 120 youngsters who were tuitioned to charter schools. That peaked in 2006. And currently, in 2009, we are at 101. Between 2006 and 2009, we opened a full-day kindergarten program, and we were able to recapture about $300,000 worth of tuitions in that manner. Next. This slide shows our charter school tuition when charter schools first started coming on the horizon, where they peaked, and we're seeing a decrease each and every year. This is our student enrollment trending, also downward. I took this off of the NESDEC report that's on our website. So if you'd like to see a full piece of the enrollment projections, the entire cohort survival methodology, it's available on our website under NESDEC presentation. I grabbed some years to show you. Every other year, starting in 1999, we had K through 12 enrollment in South Kingstown of 4,383 students. And our current is 3,459. Total column indicates, over that 10-year period, a drop in enrollment of 925 students, or negative 21.1 percent. And then, there's another chart that will anticipate projections for the future. And although we can only be certain, or I shouldn't use the word "certain," we can be more sure of the enrollment of youngsters who have already been born, we use the cohort survival method in order to look at trends to determine what will happen in the future. As you can imagine, that information is very reliable within a two- to three-year period. And after that, you're talking about students who have not been born yet. And so, we are looking, projected 2019, at a student enrollment of about 3,020. Next. This is a slide that reviews our undesignated fund balance. And as you can see, in June of 2009, our undesignated fund amount was $2,311,890. In the 2009-10 budget, one-third of our fund balance was applied to operations, which is $374,000, which gave our total to $1,937,000. 10, 11, applied $484,000, which brings our anticipated to $1,452. Before we could even create a superintendent's budget, which is the first step in this process, we had to make reductions to the school and district programs in early December. And so, we took a look at our tuition category for tuitions out of district, and saw that we're on a downward trend for out-of-district tuitions, very similar to the charter school experience, and felt we were able to reduce that account for $247,000. The charter school reduction, you saw the chart that showed our charter school experience, we reduced that line item by $134,000. And we made a decision to utilize IDEA to shift some healthcare benefits that we were carrying for special education teachers in the local budget into IDEA. So we amended IDEA to reflect $117,000 worth of change. Our total reductions, therefore, walking into the superintendent's budget, were $498,000 over the year previous. This slide shows our state aid trend, and it's sort of telling that the bottom line, which doesn't usually shake like that, looks very unstable. It's sort of ratcheting in and out. I think that's been my experience with state aid. If you notice that in 1996, we were receiving about $7 million in state aid, which at the time was 28.9 percent of our budget. And this current year, 2010, $9,742, which looks like 16 percent of our budget, that's half of what we were receiving from the state to support our school district in 1996. And projected for 2011, we're looking at best $9,255,000 when we put this budget together as a superintendent's budget. You have to keep the chronology in mind, because that keeps changing. So that represents 15 percent. And as you can see in the last column, it's been just a downward trend in the amount of support we've received from the state of Rhode Island. Next. So, in using this whole notion of chronology to follow this very complicated pattern of budget development this year, I've used the little marker at the top to indicate when there has been a change in revenue assumptions that we've had to react to. So, on December 14th, Governor Caciari announced fiscal year 2011 budget, which changed the revenue assumptions. And it really, schools and municipalities were hit hard. And at that point, we were hearing from the town that they were only able to provide us a zero levy increase to schools. And the state aid assumption that we were working with was not a negative 3 anymore, but was a negative 5 percent. Next. So, the superintendent's budget was presented at $59,800,926. And right away at the first meeting of presentation, we knew that we would necessitate another $1.2 million decrease in expenditures in order to get in line with the revenue assumptions that were coming from the state and the local government. Next. So, before, when going from a superintendent's budget to a school committee budget, we had budget hearings and talked about the different items that we eventually voted on, all very significant, all very important to the operation of our school department. And I have said publicly, and will repeat again, our school department is not stronger in this budget than it is currently. We are at a loss of many important features and programs and personnel. But I'll walk you through this. We decided that we were going to make a change in our substitute custodian policy, or program, if you will. And we were going to try to recover $10,000 here by not asking for a substitute custodian on the first day of absence. Can you see this?
Kristen, now, we need copies of this, which...
You should have...
We don't.
I mean, I have...
We don't have any copies of this.
I'm sorry.
So we're like struggling to...
Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Take notes and listen at the same time.
Do you want to take a five-minute break and have me print it? Is that what you're asking?
I think we need it. Don't you think we do?
Well, I'm taking notes, but I mean, if you need it, that's fine.
I can't even see the whole screen.
I can provide it to you tomorrow. I can email it to Steve tomorrow if you'd like. And it's, I put it onto our website this afternoon. We found that it doesn't necessarily appear immediately when we do that, so we can download it from the website as well. But I'm happy to make you copies if you...
The audience wants them. Yeah, I mean, we can't ask questions if we don't have them.
Yeah, Andy's going to get it. Andy's going to get it. Right. That's true. You had it on your computers last night. I apologize. Do you want me to do that?
I have it in front of me. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I wrote down a few questions, but it was like, and then it was so quick. So I...
All right, Andy's going to make a couple of copies.
Yeah, that'd be great, if you get copies.
It's going to take me about 10 minutes.
It seems impossible to go through. Huh?
I would say that she could continue on, but she's going to...
Yeah, go ahead. Well... If we get the copies, but we need copies.
Yes.
I can give someone a note of our state budget projection file.
Okay. That would probably be a good idea, and we do have a copy of that in front of you. Do you know?
Yeah, well, copies of the...
Okay.
...of the... So, I'll take that off. And I will put that in. The first page of the handout talks about the objectives that the council, the school committee, who are going to address in their session, like Kathy has argued, drastic aid items, so we will move on. One of the things that I presented this conference has got the third budget here, it was an overview on the district budget development, how the district budget and the school's component of the district budget. And I think that this year is important for us to look at all of the changes that have occurred at the state budget level, and the implications of what further changes could occur for us to get a better understanding of the policymaking decisions we both have to speak to, how we might at this time to take this consideration. One item we'll talk about, state budget projections, the federal funding impacts on the state budget, as well as the supplemental 10 budget, and what the implications are there, as well as the implications of 10 to the 11-year budget that the governor submitted in February. And we'll talk about lots of revenue sharing, motivation, reimbursement, and the shape of the purpose of South Kingstown, the impact that evaluation will have, which is also due to the fact that the state will provide. And next, we'll get to the education aid formula that had been proposed by the commission. First thing that I think is important for everybody to realize is that the state budget projection, after the governor put out in February, did require to provide a five-year obligation, as far as income to expense statements. And you can see that the question that he submitted for the General Assembly at the 2011 year forecasted $1.6 million surplus. Well, in reality, it's not a $1.6 million surplus, because one of the recommendations that he's making is that he not pay back the rainy day fund, $20 million, that the state overspent in the 89 years. But as we go forward, the 12th year is $362 million short of what the revenues are projected to provide. It goes up from $16,457, and all the way to 2015 at $535 million. Those estimates change each and every time there's a revenue estimation taken, as using two of those that the doctor wanted to remember one day. And they look at what the projected income is to the state's budget estimate. What we have seen is a pattern of increasing the level of our expensive income projections over the past 18 months. We would also anticipate that the recovery of Rhode Island will be slower than the national recovery. We believe that the dollar's rate will continue to exceed 13 percent on statewide basis in South Kingstown, as the percentage was around 9.8. And so, what we'll see is less income available to tax purposes, regardless of whether there is a change in the state's policies as far as the income tax, which is on the table. One component of the state budget that concerned me is that the 2010 or 2011 project had American Republic Reinvestment Act funds of $250,000, $250 million in the 10-year, and $217 million in the 11-year. For the 12th year, the error was one. So, one of the projections on why they've shown the $347 million projected deficit, a $362 million pension deficit, is because of the loss of the federal dollars from stimulus program, which have been used to plug budget holes on a one-time basis. So, this is concerning, because when you look at the federal Medicare assistance percentage, those dollars there that have been used with federal money really can't be diminished based on the plan that the state submitted to the feds last year, with a guarantee over a viable period that they will not cut the benefit levels. So, when we look at the state budget, and we see the revenue to the expense statement, and we see the drop off of the federal dollars, it's certainly indicative of less funding availability to either the municipal or school levels. The good use for the town is they can't take much more away. The bad use for the school department is that that's the only target that's left. When we look at the supplemental budget that the governor submitted in December, and when we talk supplemental 10, supplemental 10 is the fiscal 2009-2010 year, July of 2009 through June of 2010. And these were the mid-year adjustments that were necessary, because the budget forecast that after the governor's estimate, the number was that the state budget that had been adopted in June of 2009 was already $219 million on balance. So what the governor had to do was submit a mid-year budget adjustment that would reduce that $219 million, because constitutionally, states require that in our budget. $125 million of the $292 million that the governor was dealing with were proposed reductions in eight cities and towns and school districts. There's been a lot of discussion on the motor vehicle size tax. The governor recommended that two-quarters of it would help in cities and towns, it's about $65 million in total, that he was recommending be held back. The third requirement was made to the town, so that $220 million solution that he proposed is already $33 million short. Other increases, decreases that he recommended was a general 3 percent reduction in aid to education, that the corporate board would correct about $19.1 million, as well as the use of stabilization dollars to take it off the table to the local district here. And all excepted, it was about $125 million. A major portion of the solution that the governor authored was for the General Assembly to amend the pension system for teachers, with the cost of living allowances, 3 percent of the non-qualified agents preparing retirement. It would be removed, anybody who was eligible to retire before September, I believe it was October or September. The savings were really in two cases. The state pays 40 percent of teacher retirement costs, and the municipality pays 60 percent. But the governor said is, if we pass the COLA reform, and take it away from the teachers, we'll save that and we'll reduce the funding in school districts. So overall, the reductions on the COLA were around $25,000, $26 million of this December solution. So, at this point, the way I see it, is that $33 million of the solution that's already included in the cities and towns. And the General Assembly was asked to take the COLA away from the teacher retirement system in June of 2010, prior to the adoption of the 9-10 budget. They said no. So what the governor is now proposing is that they reverse the action they took nine months, six months earlier. If that does occur, and if the aid isn't restored, the school district will suffer underfunding in the 9-10 year. And the 11 budget that's been submitted by the governor takes the savings, assuming that the COLA is going to be removed in the 9-10 supplemental budget. So it creates another hole. One of the things that I said in my budget message is that if, and I presented this chart, and this chart simply showed that the adopted school budget for the 9-10 year was $59.6 million. The school district, based on the estimates of what aid was going to be, was forecasting a $740,000 surplus. Of that surplus, there was probably $600,000 in net revenue. And there was also the under expenditures that the superintendent mentioned earlier. What I did was to take a look at what would happen if the governor's budget was to be modified or deferred. The 9-10 budget, if the governor's supplemental 10 was approved by the General Assembly and took the COLA away from pensions, would allow the district to end the year with a $470,000 surplus. However, and this is not the 745,000 that the school committee sent over to me, and again, these are just projections based on the latest. If the governor's budget were passed without the COLA change, then potentially, the school district would be looking at $93,000 roughly in over expenditure, based on losing the revenue and not having it replaced once the COLA had been denied, accepted, not by the General Assembly. So, my concern in writing the message was that the school committee needed to recognize there are different potential realities that are going to refer by June 3, and need to take precautions to ensure that they do not go into a recession. The school committee has reviewed that, and has addressed that issue, and I'm sure that when Kristen gets back. One of the things that concerned me with the supplemental 10 budget in the state budget is the $21 million in land sales. That means that that $21 million can't be replaced secondly, because it's a non-referring revenue. I mentioned earlier the delay of the $21 million back to the rainy day fund, which is to repay the $21 million over expenses in the 08, 09 year, and the state share of the teacher retirement, that $12,300,000. One of the other concerns that I have is the big revenue estimating conference, putting back the $21 million projected to expense to income shortfall, and they see that increase. The reason they hold the revenue estimating conference in May is so they'll have the equal 15 payments in on income tax, so they'll have a much better idea as to how the year is shaping up. If in fact, it's not shaping up well, and that increases to $250,000 to $260,000, it just provides much greater stress on the development of the 2011 budget. One of the concerns that you've got to have when looking at supplemental 10, also is the fact that it hasn't been addressed since '07. It needs to be addressed so that it can serve as a foundation for what we're going to do at a statewide basis for the 2011 budget. When I look at the 2011 year budget, and again, the forecast is $427 million in expense over income, that budget also includes the 3.8 percent reduction in aid education. Takes the second-year savings on the pension reform and COLA, certainly hasn't been approved by the General Assembly as of yet, and wipes out the entire motor vehicle reimbursement between $135 million in total. To South Kingstown, motor vehicle reimbursement values about $2.1 million that we will lose in the budget for the 11, for the 11-year, giving it back the entire motor vehicle size taxes if removed. A great concern being looking at motor vehicle size taxes to the side, is that the supplemental 10 budget actually wipes out the paragraph that allows the exemption, which means that if it was passed and presented by the governor, it would immediately be replied to $6,000 in assessment value in the back on each vehicle. That means that each vehicle that even had $6,000 worth of credit on would see an increase of $112,050 per car. So, they would be taking your income in sales tax dollars, not returning to you, yet at the same time placing the burden back on the vehicles or the people.
...for the twelve year, uh, the error funds of one. So, one of the projections on why they've shown three hundred and forty, uh, seven million dollar projected, uh, deficit, uh, three hundred and sixty two million dollar, uh, pension deficit, is because of the loss of the federal dollars from stimulus program, which have been used to plug budget holes on a long time basis. So, this is concerning because when you look at the federal, uh, Medicare assistance percentage, those dollars there, uh, that have been used with federal money really can't be diminished based on the plan that the state submitted to the feds, uh, last year, uh, with their guarantee over a viable period that, uh, they will not cut, uh, uh, benefit levels. So, when we look at the state budget and we see the revenue to the expense statement and we see the drop off of the, the federal dollars, it's certainly indicative of, uh, less funding availability to either the municipal or school levels. The good use for the town is they can't take much more away. The bad news for the, uh, the school department is that that's the only target that's left. When we look at the supplemental budget that the governor submitted in December, and when we talk supplemental, uh, ten, supplemental ten is the fiscal two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten year, uh, July of two thousand and nine through, uh, through June of two thousand and ten, and these were the mid-year adjustments that were necessary because the budget forecast that, uh, after the government's estimating conference in November was that the state budget that had been adopted in June of two thousand and nine was already two hundred and nineteen million dollars on balance. So, what the governor had to do was submit, uh, a mid-year budget adjustment that would reduce the, uh, that two hundred and nineteen million dollars because constitutionally states required that amount of budget. A hundred and twenty five million of the two hundred and ninety two million that the government was dealing with, uh, were proposed reductions in eight cities and towns and school districts. Uh, there's been a lot of, uh, discussion on the, uh, motor vehicle life size tax. Uh, the governor recommended that two quarters, uh, being withheld in cities and towns is about sixty five, uh, uh, million dollars in total that, uh, he was recommending being held back. The third quarter payment was made to the town so that, uh, uh, two hundred and twenty million dollar solution that he proposed is already thirty three million dollars short. Other increases, uh, decreases that he recommended was a general three percent reduction in aid to education, that the course of law would be about nineteen point one million dollars, uh, as well as, uh, the, uh, use of, uh, stabilization dollars that they have off the table to deliver to the county for the new year. And all excepted done is about a hundred and twenty five million. A major portion of the solution that the governor authored was for the general assembly to amend the pension system for teachers with the cost of living allowances, three percent, uh, not, uh, increases during retirement. It would be removed, anybody who was not eligible to retire before September, I believe it was October first, uh, by the government. The savings were really in, uh, in, in two, uh, cases. State pays forty percent of teacher retirement costs, the municipality pays sixty percent. But the governor said is if we pass the COLA, uh, reform, we take it away from the teachers, we'll save that and we'll reduce the, uh, in, in school districts. So, overall, the, uh, the reductions on the, uh, on the COLA were around, uh, twenty five, twenty six million dollars of this, uh, December solution. So, at this point, the way I see it is that thirty three million dollars of the solution that's already committed to the cities and towns. And the general assembly was asked to take the COLA away from the teacher retirement system in June of two thousand and nine, prior to the adoption of the nine ten budget. They said no. So, what the governor is now proposing is that they reverse the action they took nine months, uh, six months earlier. Uh, if that does infer, and if the aid, uh, isn't restored, the school district will suffer underfunding in the nine ten year. And the eleven budget that's been submitted by the governor takes the savings, assuming that the COLA is going to be removed in the nine ten supplemental budget. So, it creates another hole. One of the things that I said in my budget message is that, uh, if, and I presented the, I presented this chart, and this chart, uh, simply showed that the adopted school budget, uh, for the nine ten year, uh, was fifty nine point six million dollars. The, uh, school district, based on, uh, the estimates of what aid was going to be, was forecasting a seven hundred and forty thousand, thousand dollar surplus. Of that, uh, surplus, there was, uh, probably, uh, uh, seven hundred, there was probably six hundred thousand dollars in national revenue. And, uh, and it was also, uh, the hundred expenditures that, uh, superintendent, uh, mentioned earlier. What I did was to take a look at what would happen if the governor's budget, whether the retirement, uh, reform were deferred. The nine ten budget, if the governor's supplemental ten was approved by the general assembly and took the COLA away from pensions, would allow the district to, uh, end the year with a four hundred and seventy one thousand dollars, uh, surplus. However, and this is down from December fourth, by the school, uh, committee sent over to me, and again, these are just projections based on the latest. If the governor's budget were passed without the COLA change, then potentially the school district would be looking at ninety three thousand dollars roughly in over expenditure based on losing the revenue and not having it replaced once the, uh, the COLA had been denied, uh, accepted by the general assembly. So, my concern in the budget message was that the school committee needed to recognize there, there are different, uh, potential realities that are going to refer by June three and need to take precautions to ensure that they do not go into a right position. Uh, the school committee has reviewed that and has addressed that issue, uh, to show that, uh, when, uh, Kristen gets back. One of the things that concerned me with the supplemental ten budget in the state budget is the twenty one million dollars that's in the land sales. That means that that twenty one million dollars can't be replaced secondly because it's a non-referring revenue. The, uh, this, I mentioned earlier, the delay of the twenty million dollars back to the rainy day fund, which is, uh, to repay the twenty million dollars over expensive, oh eight, oh nine year, uh, and the state share of the teacher retirement, uh, that twelve point three million dollars. One of the other concerns that I have is the big revenue estimating conference, which is back to that's one hundred and twenty million dollars projected, uh, to expense to, uh, the income, uh, shortfall, and they see that increase. The reason they hold the, uh, revenue estimating conference in May is so they'll have an equal fifteen payments in on, uh, on income tax, so they'll have a much better idea as to how the year is shaping up. If in fact, it's not shaping up well, and that increases to two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty million dollars, it just, uh, provides much greater, uh, stress on the development of the two thousand and eleven budget. One of the concerns that you've got to have when looking at supplemental ten also is the fact that it hasn't been addressed since December. It needs to be addressed so that it can serve as a foundation for what we're going to do at a statewide basis for the two thousand and eleven budget. When I look at the two thousand and eleven year, uh, budget, and again, the forecast is four hundred and twenty seven million dollars in, uh, in expense over income, that budget also includes a three point eight percent reduction in aid to education. Takes the second year savings on the pension reform and COLA, certainly hasn't been approved by the general assembly as yet, and wipes out the entire motor vehicle, uh, reimbursement of the one hundred and thirty five million dollars in total. Uh, the South Kings Town, uh, motor vehicle reimbursement value is about two point one million dollars that we will lose in the, uh, budget for the eleven, uh, for the one year. Give it back, the entire motor vehicle life size taxes get removed. A great concern being looking at motor vehicles and life size taxes to the side is that supplemental ten budget actually wipes out the paragraph that allows the exemption, which means that if it was passed and presented by the governor, will, uh, we will be replying to put the six thousand dollars in assessment value in the back on each vehicle. That means that each vehicle, if people had six thousand dollars worth of, uh, credit on, would see an increase of a hundred and twelve thousand and fifty cents, uh, per car. So, they would be taking your income in sales tax dollars, not returning to you, yet at the same time, placing the burden back on the vehicles or the increased cost. The two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven year budget, the school committee represented, uh, uh, in this chart, I did the same thing as I did on the five years, I took the school, uh, committee's recommended budget and said, what happens if the governor's supplemental budget, uh, uh, is passed with the, uh, COLA change, even without the COLA change? If the governor's budget went through a three point eight percent reduction, were referred, the, uh, cost of life, and the COLA work, uh, was not addressed through the general assembly in wiping that out, and if, uh, then what we would be looking at is the current budget that's on the table tonight, and probably, uh, the school committee's February eleventh submitted, would be four hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars in adjustment to the balance, which obviously it has to be balanced. One, one of the other questions that I asked in budget messages, that the school committee be aware of, like concern was on the relativity of the state budget to the local budget development, and be prepared to address how they would, uh, deal with that four hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars shortfall. And the school committee certainly have been meeting in recent documents about various options that, uh, that I would, uh, are available to them. Other arguments that I've, uh, to cover, uh, simply came up, and I've, uh, tried to address those, is that when we look at the one state aid and the three percent, you wipe the town out, you want one of the schools. When we lose two million dollars in state, uh, aid, which is reversed on motor vehicles, uh, the money's got to come somewhere for us to be able to maintain existing service levels at the, uh, you know, with, uh, the general minister offices. When you look at the chart that, uh, that's on that sheet, you certainly can't see it on that board, but over a three year period, we're seeing almost a three million dollar reduction in state aid coming to the cities and towns, uh, to the towns of South Kings Town. One year lost a one point eight six million dollars, and when you look at that one point eight six million, you say, well, what's that really mean? When we take the school transfer out of budget and we take the debt service out that we're paying, the town budget's around twenty million dollars. So, with a twenty million dollar budget, if we're losing one point, uh, eight, we've got almost a fifteen percent reduction in the revenues available to be able to fund that type of program. What we've done, and, uh, is to reduce the expenditure program, the personnel, and part of the discussions that we had last week. But at the same time, it's important to note that we can't lose that type of revenue at the municipal level without it impacting the availability of, uh, being, being able to, uh, provide additional, uh, property taxes, uh, in the, uh, in the school budget. Some communities have maybe detected that we lose two million dollars and, and schools are getting sixty percent of the taxes, uh, from the community that are raised, that they, uh, tell the, uh, the school districts, cut sixty percent of that down, and so in our case, it would be that we'd be looking at, uh, a reduction of about, uh, a one point two million dollars in annual schools. That'd be worth a fine. Uh, oddly enough, the, if we've provided a two percent increase on the forty seven million, nine hundred and nine thousand dollar transfer to the schools, you'd have a lot of million dollars. But what we're trying to do is not direct that type of, uh, in, in spending reduction, but we're trying to work collaboratively to be able to come up with the best solution for that pay. Last item that I think is important for people to know is that we will be having a, uh, revaluation in the year. Numbers will be on the bottom. The, uh, the estimates at this point is that we're looking at the resident unit class property falling down about seventeen point seven percent. The overall reduction in our tax bill will be down to about, uh, five point two billion, down to four point three billion, so we'll lose eight hundred and fifty million dollars in tax to follow. Obviously, to raise the same amount of property tax dollars next year means that you have to change the rate. Uh, people think, if, if, if someone owned a house, would be average, sort of, and that same house could pass the following year, even if, uh, we had a tax rate of twelve dollars and nine cents, it would have to go up to fourteen dollars and forty one cents just to be able to generate the same taxes, but the tax bill, that ought to be the same. But that's going to take a lot of understanding on people's part, and they look at this and they say, well, you should tax rate it around twenty percent. So, if that rate were up twenty percent, then probably the value would down twenty percent because it would be a lot of. Because we don't know what the state is going to do with the motor vehicles, uh, we'd really have a situation where we would have three different tax rates. One, we have no revaluation. The budget that we've, uh, submitted that we called a constant amount with flat funding to the schools would be about a fifteen cent tax rate increase. If we, uh, went, uh, with revaluation and had no changes in the motor vehicles, in, in other words, the state would continue to have the six thousand dollar assessment, uh, 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 reduction. The typical house would take twenty one dollars less. That's a good one. The bad news is if you own two cars, you'd end up with a two hundred and fifty dollars increase. If we have revaluation and we put the motor vehicle, uh, changes in place, the rate would have to be down to fourteen dollars and ten cents, we'd make two hundred and eight dollars less, but if you take the two hundred and eight dollars less, you'd still pick up the two hundred and fifty dollars on the, uh, on motor vehicle. Net, probably in the thirty to fifty dollar, uh, range. So, I, I think that, I wanted to get this information out to everybody because this is not a typical year, and it will not be a typical, uh, uh, next couple of years either, because with the state in the condition that it's in financially, there will be less and less of the ones available, uh, to the, uh, to the cities and towns. Even though we got property, the, the income and sales tax dollars are being paid in, it's a question of how they can be distributed when there's less dollars available than in, in a funnest situation where there's a, uh, five or six percent on the form rate. Uh, I'm going to stop there, turn to Kristen, and then we'll, uh, then go, uh, uh, deal[1009.52]
And the best example that I can give of this is if we were to have a very low enrollment in two different courses, we would combine the courses where we could and make certain that if there were two section of chemistry with seven students in them each, we'd have one section of fourteen. If there was a Spanish honors three with five students and a Spanish honors four with five students, we wouldn't run two sections. We'd run one section of three, four split with a differentiated instruction model and ten students. We have P account, which as I explained to you, has habitually been a three percent increase. And this year, the budgetary assumption going in was flat. And these are again, the supplies and materials that principals order for their schools. We took a ten percent reduction here, which will be very difficult for us in terms of the supplies that our that our students receive. It's going to cause us to need to reach out to the community as other school departments do and provide some sort of a list that says, these are the, if you're going shopping, these are the items that we would most desperately need. A red binder, four pencils, and information like that. We haven't had to do that previously. Pupil personnel clerk is a clerk in the special education office. We were able to reduce our crossing guard line item by eleven thousand dollars, and that was in consultation with the police chief. We have reading tutor services that are provided to students in our district, and we were able to reduce our local expenditure of forty thousand dollars. Our hope is, over the last few years, we have been providing a lot of professional development in reading to our teachers. And it would be best if our certified, highly qualified teachers were providing the needed reading instruction for the students in our school department. We weren't in a place several years ago where that could happen with fidelity. And so if students certainly come in and due to scheduling reasons are unable to be provided reading through one of our certified reading specialists or special education teachers, then we would have to provide those reading tutor services, but they would be paid for out of the IDEAA federal grant. Tuition account reduction of fifty thousand dollars because we were able to realize some savings in youngsters who are not leaving our district. And we eliminated high school sports invitationals and their transportation. I know that you've probably read in the newspaper that some of our sports teams have been invited to invitational competitions in New York and Connecticut and Massachusetts, and we've had to eliminate unfortunately our support of that program. And the total is one million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand because we needed to make certain that with these reductions, that they were real reductions, not that we would, we needed to anticipate unemployment insurance because inherent in the fact that there will be staff layoffs as a result of this, we needed to earmark more than one point two million, forty-nine thousand for unemployment expense this first year. Next. So here's where it gets a little more complicated because now we're beyond when the school committee has made their budget and approved their budget. As Mr. Alfred spoke about earlier, we needed to come up with an additional budget reduction plan for fiscal year two thousand ten supplemental budget in the amount of about ninety-five thousand. And we're doing that now because we're living within that budget now. So when you ask, what are you doing now to make sure that the budget that you approved a year ago, that you're not going to run into deficit? Because as we planned that budget, there was no supplemental budget from the governor. Now going forward, he has announced that he changed his mind in terms of the amount of revenue that would be available to us, and we're looking at a ninety-five thousand dollar loss. So as a result of that, I believe it was in January that we were notified of that, we froze P accounts currently. So right now, the P accounts for supplies and materials are and have been frozen. We froze all non-contractual substitute teachers. So if a teacher is ill, if a teacher is taking a contractually afforded bereavement day or personal day, then certainly they're getting a substitute teacher. But if they are asking a substitute teacher for another purpose that we have been able to support in the past, to go to a professional development session, to go and observe in another classroom, to be able to meet with a parent at a time that's extraordinary, we are not approving those subs right now. We're holding back and we've frozen that account. Certainly there are exceptions, and what we've been asking is that principals would make their requests to Mr. Rishat, and on a case-by-case basis, in priority of need, we've allowed that to occur. We also froze our professional development accounts of those programs that we've either not started, or we haven't contracted with, or we haven't, are not, I shouldn't say essential to our plan because they're all essential to our plan, but if you will, if teachers have already participated in some summer training, and then they need one other piece to be able to provide the program, then certainly we need to provide that. But the other accounts have been frozen. And we also are able to, and haven't yet, further reduce some of the now special education tuition line items because as you can imagine, we have money in that account because it's a very fluid system. As students move into our community, we need to be ready to have money to be able to offer them an out-of-district tuition should they require that level of service, and we're required to do so. Also, we have students that are in public schools right now that during the course of the year find themselves for one reason or another needing outside tuition time. And so now we're three quarters of the way through the year. Students who have been, have moved in, if a student moved in tomorrow, we wouldn't be responsible for a year's worth of outside, out-of-district tuition. We would only be responsible for a quarter's worth. So we feel as if based on that, we certainly would leave ourselves with enough money in that account for any unforeseen transfers in migration. So this slide talks about some of the planning that we've been asked to do, which started publicly last night. One or both of the following revenue concerns are likely to affect our budget, the budget that we have already passed at the school committee level. In February two thousand nine, the governor's fiscal year two thousand eleven budget included an assumption of pension changes with COLA, the cost of living adjustment. I know that Mr. Alfred talked about that. And what our implication would be is about four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So if the governor's budget passes and those COLA savings are not realized, then the assumption is that the burden of that decrease in revenue would be four hundred and fifty-eight thousand for us for this year. And the information that we're receiving from the Rhode Island Department of Education, and for me through the Superintendent's Association, from some of the legislature legislators that have met with RISA, indicates that this is very likely. February twenty-sixth, my oldest child's birthday, it's the day I became old because she turned eighteen. Ride announced the funding formula and put that in the Providence Journal. And as I'm sure everyone in the audience is very aware, there were, it was winners and losers as depicted by the Providence Journal. And we were, absent the regional communities who truly lost more than anyone else, we were the public school department in Rhode Island who really was one of the biggest losers by about three million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand. And they've told us that that will be a step progression over ten years of loss of revenue, and that we can expect four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the first of each of eight years, and then it probably will be a little bit different for years nine and ten. So taking those two likely assumptions in mind, we know about them, and we are aware that they could become a part of our reality in the next couple of months. So we needed to take the time now to plan out how we would create a budget reduction plan in response to this, knowing that we have already taken five hundred thousand and one point two million, and that we've already reduced so many areas that there are not good options left. So our total budget reduction plan needed right now to start planning is in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. Next. There are other considerations that are on our mind that we know we may need to plan for, and we express, have been expressing them publicly to the community so that they won't be taken by surprise if they occur. One is the opportunity for the town to lose the fourth quarter, thank you, motor vehicle tax, and also the fiscal year two thousand eleven motor vehicle tax in the amount of approximately a million dollars.
Two point one.
Oh, two point one. God. So we understand that we may need to share in that burden because we represent seventy-nine percent of the town budget. We also know that the federal era funds are due to expire in two thousand twelve, and the federal stabilization monies that are currently being used in Rhode Island to supplement the state aid, but in other places actually come as extra funds to education. Wouldn't that be unique? The governor would determine whether, when SFSF expires, if that amount will be considered within a base of our state aid, or if that just gets eliminated. So would they supplement back, or would it just get eliminated? So regardless of the scenario posed to us in the next few months, there aren't positive ones up there, and I would have liked to have seen some good news. Next. So then the work and the thinking and the planning become, how will we get to the nine hundred and twenty-six thousand if it's needed? And so what I've done is sort of mirror the reduction process that we went through to get to the one point two million. On this slide, you're going to see things that I can't cut, things that cannot be reduced. So contractual salaries, advertising and media costs are, just like you, I'm required to post meetings, I'm required to post functions, send things with the Attorney General, and I'm not at liberty to say, I no longer want to do that. We have to provide health insurance, life insurance, dental insurance, retiree health and medical OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits, and teacher pension and municipal pension per contract. We have to provide FICA, unemployment benefits, workers' compensation where we're a direct pay, purchase services such as legal, the auditor, the police, the fire, the physician, the school dentist, rubbish disposal, water, telephone, and sewage, transportation is a requirement, liability and vehicle insurance, gasoline, fuel, and electricity. So these comprise most of our budget. Next. Oh, good, it comes up. Pretty good. So then we need to look at the items that we can consider for possible reduction. And I've, because we've been through so many portions of this already, I color-coded for you, which is not available on your handout, but you could probably put a G next to the ones that are green and an R next to the ones that are red. Red is already reduced in the one point two million dollar reduction. That's gone. We've already made that reduction. Blue is being considered in the nine twenty-six reduction planning. And black are the items that are not yet being considered. Green, we're reduced with the one point two million and are being considered again for additional reductions. So the big idea is to look at the areas that are in black for this slide because the items being considered for the nine twenty-six reduction, I'll go into deeper detail on in future slides. So this is the, oop, sorry, next. So this is the, sorry that the print is smaller, but I'll go through them all. This is the slide that shows staff, you know, components of our staff, the major components. And in red, you'll notice the items that I already talked about previously. They were already reduced. High school section consolidation, itinerant efficiencies, maintenance, pupil personnel clerks, teacher assistants and clerks, and substitute custodians. In blue are the items that I'm considering for the nine twenty-six reduction. Administrators, librarians, school nurse teachers. And in green are the areas that have already been hit, and I'm suggesting that we go a little deeper into for the reduction plan. Central office staff and the custodian crew. In black are the areas that are not yet being considered. So they are the only other areas that I could pull from. Guidance counselors and the rationale behind that is that our sophomores at South Kingstown High School are the first class to graduate in the state of Rhode Island under the new proficiency-based graduation diploma system. And it's a new concept, and it's a requirement by law. And if youngsters aren't proficient, they will be at risk of not graduating. And a piece of support for them are the guidance personnel. Not that there are not more teachers that support that progress, there certainly are, but guidance is a linchpin of that component. And I'm really concerned about at this juncture for those students, limiting guidance counselors. Reading and math coaches because they have been instrumental in assisting our teachers and our students specifically in response to intervention techniques and PLPs. And technology support because we only have five folks in that entire department. And we are looking at two very significant things happening this year. One is the launching of iParent, which is a way that parents can look into the students' grades and progress and syllabus, if you will, information. Teachers will need a lot of support in getting that program off the ground this year. And parents will need a lot of support in translating and understanding that information. We also are being told by Commissioner Gist that we're going to be looking at implementing a statewide student information system. And if we do that, then that changes the way that we schedule, that changes the way that we create transcripts, and that would not be the time to eliminate some of our technology support because it would be desperately needed for us to make certain that we're generating transcripts for youngsters. And report cards. The other option is the truant officer, and the truant officer is really, it's quite a deal. We have a retired state police officer who, for about ten thousand dollars, is in court for us almost every day, or doing some sort of work. He provides a lot of support to families. He goes to the courts on our behalf. He provides support in residency issues where folks from other towns are wanting to live here because of our fantastic school department, and also assisting families with truancy issues. Next. In the area of sports, music, supplies, and renovation, as I've clustered them, items already reduced were the high school invitational sports, the P accounts, maintenance, and technology. And the areas that are under consideration currently are middle school sports, intermurals, and elementary orchestra. The areas that have remained yet to be reduced are high school sports and elementary band. Clearly, it is not my intention to reduce programs for students. And those, high school sports and elementary band would be core programs that I just are not yet reduced. And the last area are other programs. So the areas that were reduced already were crossing guards, curriculum work, teacher-mentor program, professional development funds, reading tutors, although that's sort of a misnomer because it's a funding shift rather than an elimination. And the tuition category reduction, which again, if a student presents requiring tuition, that will of course be honored as it is required. And the areas that we're looking at in the reduction plan are all-day kindergarten, ESP and ESY, which is extended school year for youngsters who have special needs. And again, if they're required to have an extended school year, that will of course be provided by law, but we've seen a downward trend in the needs in that area. Our teachers have been doing a fantastic job in working with youngsters over the school year so that they're not needing as much summer support as we had in years past. Family and community engagement is a program that supports families in our community, and my suggestion is to move that from the local budget into Title I, which is a federal grant. So that, the services won't be reduced there, but the funding source would shift. Student assistance counselors who help our youngsters and speak to them privately about substance abuse issues and relationship issues, et cetera. And then there's an area for therapists and outside evaluations, which again, we're experiencing a downward trend. The areas that have remained at this point unchanged are the cares group. Again, quite a deal we have here where we pay a very small fee for hundreds of volunteers to come into our classrooms and provide necessary services, and they're trained. And that's unique, I think, to South Kingstown. Club advisors, which could be yearbook, student council, National Honor Society, mainly programs at the high school, but certainly some at the middle school. Late buses, which I've been in a community that eliminated late buses as a budget reduction, and from my perspective, it doesn't work because what happens is, conceptually, it seems like a good idea. Parents will, you know, need to pick up their children if they stay after school. But what ends up happening is youngsters don't get the extra help that they need, they don't stay, they don't get the support, and their grades start to decline substantially. So I'm really apprehensive about moving in that area. PBGR coordinator, which is the person who coordinates all of our proficiency and graduation requirements, and SMILE, which is an eleven thousand dollar contribution to a very important science program. Next. So when we're thinking about the options for consideration, as you can see in the areas, our options are very, very limited, and there's nothing on this list that we believe we don't need. But it gets to the point where you have to make very difficult choices among line items that are in front of you. So option number one, and these options are in no recommended order, would be to reduce line items even further, and I showed you in the color coding which line items. Option number two is that we could consolidate an elementary school, and option number three is that we could eliminate the all-day K. Excuse me, next. One of the things that I don't think that I was good about communicating to the public last night, I thought I had, but in conversations today, that's not necessarily what folks heard. Possible changes to our revenue stream will necessitate the need to choose one or more of the following. I think folks last night got the impression that it'd be one, and that was not my intention if that's what they heard. So I provided this slide with two examples, and this is a different slide than I showed last night. So for example, if the funding formula is passed and we lose four hundred and sixty-eight thousand of revenue, then we choose one of the three options. But if the funding formula is passed and the COLA is offset, the COLA offset is not realized, then we would need to choose two of the options to realize nine hundred and twenty-six thousand. Next. This slide just shows you specifically my recommendation in the first corner, eliminate or reduce the item and the cost, and then a little bit more information about that item. Some of them are self-explanatory, but let me just illustrate for you what a floating school nurse teacher is, because when I said it out loud, I could envision sort of floating. So what happens in South Kingstown is that each of our school buildings has a full-time school nurse teacher. And school nurse teachers are RNs that are certified teachers. And in addition to one in each building, we have had a floating school nurse teacher who spends most of her time at the high school because it's a large building and we have lots of medically fragile students there. And on occasion, when a certified school nurse teacher in one of the other buildings is sick or has a bereavement day or another necessary absence, then the floating school nurse teacher will go into that school and will provide the necessary nurse coverage. In each of our buildings, we have medically fragile students who require a full-time school nurse teacher in the building all day long. And so what, and the other item to note is that when students are on a field trip, sometimes a school nurse teacher needs to accompany them because of their medical condition. And so we can't have the school nurse teacher leave the building to accompany them, so we send the floating school nurse teacher, or send the floating school nurse teacher to cover the school, and the regular school nurse teacher goes. So it would be very difficult to eliminate this floating school nurse teacher because what that would mean is that my assistant superintendent would receive a call from one of our nurses in the morning saying that they were going to be absent, and she would need to begin to search for a certified nurse teacher. Nurses are in high demand right now, and so typically, they are not waiting at home for the substitute call. So it's been very difficult to find a coverage, and this has been very important for the health of our students. Elementary orchestra, as I said last night, we have some of the most wonderful musicians I have ever heard. I had a wonderful experience last week at the Curtis Corner Middle School where I was invited to a jazz ensemble, and our kids don't get that great in one year. They start their programs in fourth and fifth grade with wonderful instruction. Intermural sports are six through twelve offerings that are non-competitive. They are recreational and intermural, and all kids are invited to participate. It's not just the kids that would be proficient enough to make a Rhode Island Interscholastic League team. Student assistance counselors, I said, are those folks that help with the substance abuse counseling and relationship conversations. Contracted therapy services, I talked about. High school librarian who came last evening and made a very compelling speech is necessary for the health of the library and the program. The BEP now gives a little bit of wiggle room in terms of the requirements of library services. So we would be able to provide library services, but the level is what's concerning. An administrator. I'm very apprehensive to cut an administrator right now because as you know, at the end of this month, Commissioner Gist is going to be unveiling her plan for teacher evaluation, teacher assistant evaluation, and administrator evaluation, which is unprecedented of what we've seen in Rhode Island so far. It's going to be very labor intense for our administrators, lots of information gathering and data gathering. It's linked to performance of students, and there's lots of observations. And so I would hate to see our principals, who are the instructional leaders of our buildings, who are very much in charge of the safety and well-being of our students all day long, spending most of their time evaluating. So it's important to have as many folks as we have now to be able to distribute that work. Middle school sports, we have a wonderful middle school sports program. We have offerings that are very necessary, and we have enough so that youngsters can participate. You should be able to participate in middle school sports. It's not as competitive as high school sports. I come from a middle school where my children attend, where there have been seventeen hundred students and recently have almost fourteen hundred with one soccer team, of which girls and boys try out. So as you can imagine, of the fourteen hundred students, eight boys and eight girls are allowed to participate. That's tough. Central office support is my office yet again. We do payroll for the entire school department, almost sixty million dollar operation, healthcare, human resources. We manage the databases for substitutes, and it would be very tough to do so without an additional staff member. Extended school year reduction of eleven thousand, I already talked about, and more into our custodian piece. And we want our schools to be clean. We want our schools to be ready to accept students. Next page, please. Option two is an elementary school consolidation. We heard quite a bit last evening, compelling testimony from parents and from teachers in each of the schools, the elementary schools, talking about the necessary pieces of community building and all of the wonderful attributes of their school building. This would be devastating to those folks. The salary that we're projected, depending upon which elementary school would eventually be chosen, may vary a little bit, but we used a typical salary of a less senior person to be able to do our budgetary assumptions, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three thousand. We're projecting operational savings would be two hundred and forty-six thousand. It could cost us, depending upon which school, about hundred and twenty-six thousand for transportation. It probably wouldn't. We've been asked to provide a breakdown by each school. What would it look like specifically in terms of transportation expense and operational and salary savings? So we will be working on that this week. And then certainly, there would be projected one-time expenses in the amount of about a hundred thousand dollars, and that would be due to one-time moving costs and unemployment for that first year. Next. And the third, again, not in any order. Excuse me. And the third, again, not in any order, excuse me, would be the elimination of the all-day kindergarten program. All-day kindergarten's not required in the state of Rhode Island. We do it here and we've realized some pretty terrific gains in, in student achievement. Total projected savings of staff and, and transportation and eliminating the full-day K would be about 450,000. As I presented last night, this option would impose a combounding expense, probably of about $300,000 in additional charter school tuition, because that's what we realized when we implemented the full-day K, a reduction in about $300,000 worth of charter schools. Someone from the community brought out last night that in closing an elementary school, I might see an increase in, in charter schools. We took a look at some of the South Road data today and, and, and that wasn't the case with South Road, but the, the charter schools hadn't gotten up and, and running at that point. So they weren't in, in full, full force. So that's something that we would need to consider as well with the elementary option. And, and that pretty much summarizes my presentation this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, that was a lot of information. Okay. Does the council have any questions? Ella, she's already raising her hands. Ella, go ahead.
Kristin, on that last page with the all-day K option three, has the transportation cost for the runs, if it went back to a half-day all-K program been factored in?
Yes.
And do you have an approximation of what that cost would be to put those runs back in the middle of the day?
Probably about 63,000 one bus.
Yeah, that figure, I know, was much different when we put the all-day K in. And if I, Scott, if you can remember back, when all-day K was put in, it was approximately 450,000. And one of the reasons why we put the all-day K in, my memory, I think it was like back then 100,000 that we were going to save in eliminating the morning K runs and then picking up the kids for the afternoon K, so.
I needed to consult with John Rashat, because I wasn't here at that time. But eventually, the, we had a different transportation provider at that time, who, who gave a projection of $100,000, but that's not what we actually ended up realizing in terms of an expense. It was one bus, about $63,000.
Does anybody else on the council have a question? Carol?
I had one. On option two with the elementary school consolidation, you have the salary, projected savings of 473,061. How many positions is that?
It would be, it's, it would be a clerk in the front office, a secretary in the front office, it would be the custodians, it would be a certain percentage of the itinerant time, because they wouldn't have to travel between buildings now. It would be some, some split positions. It would not be a administrator probably, because we would need to, it could be, I don't think an administrator is in that, in that projection. A half of an administrator. And it's a school nurse teacher, and it's a little bit of reading support.
So no, no teachers would be eliminated?
The teachers, we're find, finding that, we're looking that if we eliminated, it would be four full-time teachers, but that includes, that, that includes the split support teachers that I talked about. A school nurse teacher, 0.5 of a librarian, teacher assistants, secretary, clerk, and custodian.
Kristin, thank you. I thought this was an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thought it was very clear, at least it helped me out quite a bit in, over the years, but nicely done. A question from page eight, and I don't know if it's page eight response that I need, but some of these reductions, are any of these unfunded mandates, how can I integrate the state unfunded mandates with some of your cost eliminations here?
Okay, so there are lots of, of unfunded mandates, and it would be easier for me and more precise to get a list to you after this evening of what they are, but I can certainly run through some of them. So bus monitors are unfunded mandates. And they're a part of our transportation cost, so that's an area that I'm not at liberty to cut. School nurse teachers are unfunded mandates. Certainly, there's been legislation back and forth talking about the fact that why can't we have LPNs that would be much cheaper? Certainly, the, and everything associated with the proficiency-based graduation requirement would be an unfunded mandate. So that could be a piece of guidance counselors, reading teachers at the high school, reading teachers at the middle school, folks that are, that are implementing RTI. Yeah, private school buses, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Private school books would be in our supplies and materials.
All right, well, just at some point, if you just could, give me an overlap, just, just a rough, I ran out of colors in my pens here. And one more question, if I could, Kathy, just the.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Basic education plan, is there some pyramid, is there somewhere I can find out what the state, what the government, federal government, what is required basic education? What are the programs that fit in there? What are the programs outside of that?
Sure.
What is really?
The basic education plan.
But is there a list somewhere?
Yes, it's, it's on the Rhode Island Department of Education website, you click on BEP. And so years ago, in the 60s, when it was originally, it's a Rhode Island education plan, it's not a national program, and they established minimums of what should be happening in every single school. That's changed. The BEP now that will come into play and is online, as of July 1st this year, will be, it's, it's shorter and it has requirements that are more pedagogical rather than lists of requirements. So for example, previously, it would say per 2,000 students in a high school, you need 1.7 librarians, a teacher assistant, and 5,000 copies of books. Now, it, it describes that we would need to come up with a plan to make, to ensure that students are, are receiving an adequate library service.
But is there something with all of your list of employees that you could just color in red that fall under the BEP plan requirements?
Wouldn't that be nice, but no.
Okay, thank you.
Holly?
Dr. Strimbrilla, do you see any of these, like the reading specialist, do you think you could use some volunteers from the schools?
Would they be certified reading volunteers?
Yes.
Because we'd sign them up in a heartbeat.
Assuming the university has such a.
We work with the University of Rhode Island in, and Mary Kelly does a lot of collaboration. We have lots of their students in our schools all the time. Our, our teachers are very gracious and open up their classrooms to practicum students and students who are doing their student teaching experience. And then they become certified and they graduate and they move on. But we certainly have some professors who are coming in and joining the CARES program and do, do some, some help. But it's, it's, it's something that we certainly could expand, but a- as such, we haven't been able to rely on that volunteer support as a part of a student's educational planning.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, we do. We have a retired engineer at Mattoonik School that does a fabulous science program that we were able to, to, to watch at one of our school committee meetings. So we do have a lot of infusion into the community, of very, very talented folks. But we, when students are required to have a PLP, which is a personal literacy plan because they're reading below grade level, then we're required to have a staff person, a certified reading teacher, to be able to work with them on a very predictable, consistent
Alan?
Kristin, one of the things, when we're trying to reconcile the state aid numbers, there were some programs that were outside of the funding formula, and there were some categorical, one of them being, I believe, group home aid, which was, in South Kingston's case, around 375,000. Does that reduce the 468,000?
John actually had a conversation with Cindy Brown at RIDE about group home aid, so if, if you would like to speak to that, that would be helpful.
To arrive at the, sorry, I'll just speak.
Project.
To, to arrive at the commissioner's 2010 enacted state aid figure, that she then applied the, the formula two to work down from. The formula was current year aid, less the group home aid of $375,000, and then add in the, the stimulus funds that the governor had used to offset the reduction in state aid. And so that felt, that, that triggered the question for me to Cindy Brown of, of why would you pull out the group home aid? Will we still have that in addition to the, the aid and the, the new formula? And the answer was yes, we would still receive that in addition.
Right, so that reduces the 468 by $375,000. Is that correct?
Well, we haven't seen that in writing yet.
Okay. So we, we could be talking about an exposure of only 100,000 instead of 468,000.
Tomorrow, I'm meeting with Commissioner Gist and Carolyn Diaz to review all of our questions that we generated about the funding formula. I'm taking your list that you provided to the legislators, taking our list. There were some folks that sent some questions in, certainly the school committee has provided some questions. Group home aid is, is something we want a definitive answer on, because it would be substantial for us.
Okay. And, and the other thing is also that, that there's a qualification in there on pre-K programs. Now, I believe that's only in the high-need communities, which we probably wouldn't fit under that category, but I think it would be worth asking that question to make sure that we don't qualify for it.
Alan, what was that second question, Alan? I was trying to write that down.
The pre-K.
Oh, right.
But it seems like it's only for the high-need communities, which we probably wouldn't qualify for that. But again, I'd rather have them tell us, no, we don't qualify, than not ask the question.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll get into now the education aid formula, since we, in the hiatus there, went over the concerns and the budget. So to the education aid formula, Steve.
Again, going back to the handout that folks were looking at, that I had prepared for this evening, get back to the, close to the, I think it's four pages from the end. The implications on the recommended education aid formula. The information that I'm providing on the first two charts really is the information from the commissioner's office. And essentially, what they're saying is that core instructional amount will, per student, will be established in the 10, 11-year at $8,295. And what they're doing is they're multiplying that times the number of students in the school district to come up with the first number. The second component is that the student, for really what is a poverty driver within the formula, where they are awarding additional dollars, 40% of the $8,295, or $3,318 per student, that is in the preschool through, through grade 12 eligible for free lunch or reduced, free or reduced lunch program. Those two factors come up to a certain dollar amount. In our case, it works out to be about $31 million. The formula then says, well, what we're going to do is we're going to take the equalized weighted assessment value of a community, and we're going to factor in how much of that $31 million of core costs should be reimbursed by the state. The biggest problem that I have with the formula really comes in on this equalized weighted assessment valuation. It's a very complicated formula, or equation, I should say, that takes the assessment value from three years prior to the December 31st, most recent December 31st date. So in our case, it would be December 31st of 2006. What that means to us is that we're using the last revaluation period, when the role of this town increased by over $1 billion, $51 million. And we're going to be using that and receiving it, funding availability, in the year that the role is now going down by $855 million. So there's a problem with the reference year. But even if they can't change the reference year, what the, what their, what the formula does, and really, this is a formula that probably goes back to the 1960s and was used in the old formula for, for education aid, is it then says, okay, well, what's the ratio of assessment on a statewide basis? So they say, okay, well, we take the last two years of sales data, we look at what your average home prices are, and they come up for each community and decide, somebody's at 92%, somebody's at 95%. They then recalculate all of the tax rolls based on, if you're at 93%, they factor it in by 7% more. If you're at 102%, they would decline it by 2%. That gives you what the state would consider the full value of the tax rolls equalized. So every city, city and town would be considered at 100% value. If they stopped there, I'd have less difficulty with the formula. What then happens is, they then say, well, we're going to now increase the role value by a median family income value. So in South Kingstown's case, the median family income in South Kingstown, and the most recent numbers that they're using is the 2,000 census, so they'll be 11 years old by the time they're used in first, first formula, is that they're going to increase our full value by another 28%. So if you have a, a community that has less than a 100%, let's take Central Falls, Central Falls is 50% of median family income, they would then take their full value and multiply it by 0.5, rather than ours at 100, 1.28. So you can see what's happening is that what they're attempting to do is to recognize the wealth of the community in terms of property value, and increasing that based on the income of the community. So that really is, if you use the median family income, a built-in poverty driver. For them to then use a new poverty driver, which is the number of students that are on a free or reduced-priced lunch, means that there's an added benefit to those communities that would have a high ratio of children on that lunch, reduced or free lunch program. Give you an example, I believe South Kingstown, we're at 18%. City of Providence is at 88%. So the City of Providence takes the number of students that they have at 88% factor for that 40% factor. So there's a doubling of the poverty indicator that drives that formula really to the disadvantage of suburban communities. There's never going to be a formula that's going to make everybody happy. But what the formula should do is to be equitable. Being as numbers-oriented as I am, I couldn't resist redoing the formula just for South Kingstown.
Really? That's a surprise, Steve. Shocked.
But I'll also admit that Alan ran a parallel run and we came to the penny.
Oh, God. It's unbelievable.
And he wanted to argue about us being off a penny. The, the share ratio, the way the state formula is presented now, would say that of that $31 million, we should get 17.3% of that reimbursement from the state. That's how we go from the 9.8 million down to 5.5 million. If they stopped and didn't use the median family income and just assumed they were using the poverty factor for the 40%, our rate would jump from 17.3 to, I think it was 25, about 25%. Now, obviously, if that were the case and the suburban communities picked up a great deal of that money, it would mean that there would be less money going into the urban areas. One of the problems that formula creates at this point is that if seventy percent of the students receive higher dollars, then the thirty percent that are seeing less dollars have got severe losses. Some of the school districts, particularly those that are regional school districts, received under the old formula a bonus for regionalizing. That bonus is taken away, so in some cases, it's meaning that some of those school districts will be losing in excess of fifty and sixty percent of their income in, and the Commissioner suggested, well, we'll take it over an eight-year period. Well, when you have a loss, in our case would be the three point eight million dollars, and you're going to make that up over eight years, it's still cumulative impact. It's still a loss of the money because the pot of money is not proposed to increase over that eight-year period, yet on a yearly basis, there's an additional increment that's coming off of, off of that base. It's also important to note that people are looking at an education aid formula that deals with only a half a market basket of what true costs of education are. It does not include transportation costs, which obviously, for a suburban community, are going to be very expensive costs. For some reason, it doesn't include pension costs associated with teachers. The logic that's been provided by the Commissioner's office has been that any cost that has local policymaking decisions should be excluded from the education program as a core cost. Well, there's no decision on whether or not a teacher is a member of the teacher retirement system. There's no decision on the state's part whether or not that school district is going to be a member of the state retirement system. So there's, what needs to be looked at is how the market basket was established for core costs. And also, how are those other costs going to be, going to be met by the community that has got a step-down plan in place over an eight-year period? Because if our objective is to create mediocrity statewide in school systems, the formula may accomplish that.
Still do it.
But what the formula is not really addressing is how did they get to some of the numbers? I think public vetting of the formula and discussions about the formula are going to be important before this thing goes forward. One of the other costs is for special needs children. They've excluded, they've included state costs for those where the cost is five times higher than what the cost is for the student. To get to that level, we would be the highest in New England. Most of the states are at four, four times or three times. To come to the core cost of the eighty, eighty-three hundred dollars, it's quite remarkable and somewhat coincidental that when you take the total number of students statewide and the total number of special factors that have been brought into the formula, that it works out to the same dollar amount as what the existing education aid is.
It's unbelievable.
So what I'm suggesting is that that may be, that may be an appropriate dollar amount. It's close to what it is in other states. But what's included in that cost, and more importantly, what's excluded, that some of those have very expensive annual cost escalations associated with them, are going to be the responsibility of those school districts. So there needs to be greater time taken statewide to review it. Obviously, if you've got a school district that's going to pick up five million dollars in additional funding, they probably won't want to figure out what the quadratic mean is of the formula. But it is going to be important for people to recognize that, that this system is not going to be implemented where the eight years is going to be what's projected here. Because remember, three years from now, South Kingston's new revaluation will be in place. However, there'll be a new median family income, which could in fact take it higher. But those numbers have got to adjust on an annual basis. So the solutions may work in the first year from a state perspective in terms of distribution. They certainly are not going to work for many of the districts. But there's no provisions at this point to address how often the formula's updated. There's no provisions to look at whether or not there really is a reason for a median family income factor to be incorporated into the full value of a community. Interestingly enough, in two thousand and one, the State Department of Municipal Affairs commissioned a report, it was called the ALMY report, and it took exception to the state's formula for adding median family income and suggested that while they were not hired to specifically look at that factor, that they felt that that incorporation, as well as providing a poverty driver within the overall formula, was in fact inappropriate. I'm trying to get my hands on that, that report because I'd like to read the entire report only, other than just excerpts. But I think this is the type of information that needs to be brought to the table. You can't have a formula that's going to deal with a hundred and forty-seven thousand children and have it be prepared by five people. Because the interests, there are so many diverse interests that need to be at the table. So that's my piece. Al, what have I missed?
A couple of things I'd like to add as far as what Steve was talking about, the ALMY report. That median family income was in there, but it was prior to the state having a state income tax. So once the state income tax went in place, those individuals that, you know, earned lots of money, obviously, were paying it through state income tax, and that's how they justified that the median family income shouldn't be included in there because the sales tax had been added. So.
Sales and income.
Sales and income. Yeah, I meant income tax, excuse me. So that's something that hopefully, we can get a hold of and dive into that a little more. The other thing is that, you know, again, Steve mentioned that forty percent on the poverty factor. And again, both Connecticut and Massachusetts, their core curriculum costs are around ninety-six hundred, where Rhode Island is proposing eighty-two hundred. Yet the poverty ratio in Rhode Island is forty percent, which is significantly higher than both Mass and Connecticut. Connecticut's at thirty-three percent, and Mass does it in a step grade where anybody from grades one through eight, it's three thousand, two hundred, and then once you hit high school, it goes down to twenty-six hundred. So it's a significant drop-off and far, far less than what Rhode Island is proposing. So those are the things that really need to be, and we need to kick the tires on this to make sure that this is a fair and equitable process. And it was done for free, so sometimes you get what you pay for.
One additional comment is the state would still need to be able to come up with the dollar amounts on an annual basis. Even if the formula was instituted, if in fact the state would have, such as the numbers I've talked about earlier, as far as four hundred and five hundred million dollar shortfalls, the education aid distribution could be reduced. So the impact could in fact be greater on communities than is anticipated and presented in that, that first report. Again, we've had an opportunity to review this for, you know, about a week. It took a while to be able to get the data runs, to be able to look at how each of the numbers moved. There's also concerns as far as the state law with maintenance of effort requirements. If Barrington's going to receive an additional X millions of dollars, or I should say, if Barrington receives that, do they still have to maintain the same property tax transfers they had in the prior year? Conversely, the communities that are going to be short-funded, are they going to be held to thirty-fifty? And even if they are exempted from thirty-fifty, is the ability to pay of the community, not the willingness, but the ability to pay, one where it's going to drive people out of suburban communities because they can't afford the taxes that are necessary to be able to provide for what they, they deem to be an appropriate education program? So there's much larger issues that are on the table than just the budget here tonight. And those issues are going to drive decision policies considerations with both boards. This budget process is not going to end with the preliminary budget being adopted on March twenty-second or the final budget being adopted on, on May third. Because under the state constitution, the school committee is required to adjust their budget based on an estimated shortfall on revenue. So it could be at any time, just as the municipal budget. When we lost the revenue-sharing money, we had to make mid-year cuts. And one last comment is, there's an election in November.
to be taken all that, that seriously.
There'll be a new governor in November, and the potential for a supplemental budget for
Certainly, I'm going to be prepared to make them.
There's a number of primitive analytical institutions that could provide to five
the eleven-year, just as there was in ten and just as there was in nine, is more than a remote possibility.
or ten people to hear review of that topic and could eliminate some of the shortfalls.
So we, we can't assume that the money that we expect to get in, in July, is in fact
And work that to represent.
the money that we're going to have by the following June. Just like in running our own households, there has to be a margin that you're going
Scott?
I wanted to echo Fred's comment.
to maintain. So that's the best information I can provide you on the formula at this point.
Okay.
At the State Association of School Committees, we've been looking at that for the same week.
Well, Fred, I think had a question for us.
I agree.
And frankly, I'm really impressed by the level of analysis that you've done on this. It is disappointing that the vested interest that we all have in trying to protect South Kingston from an unfair formula may make it more difficult for people to hear the analysis. And so having outside reviewers, I think, is an excellent idea. I would add one more technical question to the questions you've identified, and that is there are a number of communities, particularly the urban communities, that in their own support for education, don't rise to the level of the formula. So the eighty-three hundred, they are not making that level of contribution. And there's an open question about whether the legislation will end up making conditional on the receipt of new dollars that communities come forward with the level of support in terms of municipal dollars. Pawtucket, for instance, is running in the, on the order of eight million dollars short of meeting the minimal effort in the formula. That, if that's how the legislation gets written, and it will, the communities that look like big winners may need to rethink how big a winner they are because of the, there may be a demand for them to provide much more substantial support for public education. And that's an open question. There's silence so far from the group at Brown that came up with the formula and, and as I understand it, from the Commissioner's office.
And the outfit at Brown was the Urban Education Institute.
That's true. That's true.
Maybe we should have URI if they have a suburban education group.
That could be the peer reviewer.
Do a similar study.
Write that down. Yes.
But one thing that we have to be aware of, it is going to be an uphill battle because seventy percent of the districts gain from this new funding formula.
Right. And their representatives can't wait to put their hands up and approve this. We don't, we don't have the power behind us. Something has to be realized.
I think even if the changes that we would suggest are necessary, there still would be less dollars for South Kingston.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And people will need to recognize that you can fight and win a battle, yet at the same time, see substantial reductions in aid with this type of reallocation. Because there is such a large distribution formula change that's occurring. But just that median family income factored out, we'd be looking at, instead of five point five million, it would be eight million, twenty-six thousand. Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-five percent share versus seventeen point three percent share. And now, whether that, you know, means that, you know, some of the communities that we're looking at, you know, City of Providence, I think, was looking at twenty-nine million dollars in new aid, whether that would mean that they would be down to six million dollars with that reallocation to other suburban or rural areas. The problem with the way this thing was done is they put the numbers out for people to decide whether they liked it rather than studying whether or not it was appropriate.
Right.
And I, and that's, that's the first criticism that I think needs to be made on this. Because once you tell somebody that you're going to give them twenty-eight million dollars, they're really not going to care how to get that as long as they can get that. Once the peer review starts and you say, well, a more appropriate distribution would be this, they're now measuring that reallocation against the twenty-eight million versus where they, where they currently are. So it makes the discussion much more polarized.
Absolutely. Mr. Angelique?
Just by way of information relative to the funding formula, I understand that the House passed a resolution today requesting that the Commissioner get out into the communities and hold community forums around some of the very questions that we're referring to. I would, I would, I would guess that some of the more important communities would be the ones that are impacted most significantly. So I guess more to come on that.
Well, this is the first meeting that will occur next Monday with the representatives of cities and towns, which will take place in East Providence. But I just think that when you start having, you know, twenty different people with diverse interests, you're not going to get those things out. There needs to be more one-on-one. But there also needs to be real education of our legislators as to what the implications are, so that there can be a strong voice in Providence as to, that we're not looking to take dollars that aren't, that we're not entitled to, but rather that we are entitled to, to certain dollars and that for them to be supportive of the program, even if we're going to get less. They may have to support a funding formula that provides less dollars than what we're currently receiving. But as long as it's a fair formula, then I think you can live with it. Because if you go into this trying to just say, we want more than what we currently have, you're going to lose. What you need to do is to say what's equitable or the most equitable and more appropriate formula than what's in place today. Kristen, can we?
Yeah, Kristen, yes. I thought I saw her.
I have a very quick question. When you say ALMY report, can you spell that? Is it A-L-M-Y?
Yes. Correct.
Thank you. I just want to Google it.
Jim?
Yes, Steve, I know Representative Jello, if I'm pronouncing her name incorrectly, forgive me, but she's submitted her Education Funding Formula Act. Again, it's a formula that I, I stumbled over, but it looked very similar to last year's where they basically were taking all the money away from South Kingston and like communities. I know they had about a hundred million dollar total of what they were taking away from the, quote, wealthier communities. Where does that stand? Is that a backup to this education funding formula? Any idea if that's going to surface?
It, my understanding is the bill has been submitted. What could happen is the sub-A on that bill could be this, this program. But they're, they're going to need to get it into legislation so that it can at least go through the hearing process. But if she were willing to accept a sub-A on her bill, which would really be a replacement of her bill- And that, for them to be supportive of the program, even if we're going to get less, they may have to support a funding formula that provides less dollars than we're currently receiving. But as long as it's a fair formula, then I, I think you can live with it. Because, if you go into this trying to just say, "We want more than what we currently have," you're going to lose. What you need to do is to say, "What's equitable, or the most equitable and more appropriate formula than what's in place today."
Yeah, Kristen, yes, I thought I saw her.
A very quick question. When you say ALMY report, can you spell that? Is it A-L-M-Y?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. I just want to Google it.
Jim?
Yes, Steve, I know Representative Jello, if I'm pronouncing her name incorrectly, forgive me, but she submitted her Education Funding Formula Act again. It's a formula that I, I stumbled over, but it looked very similar to last year's, where they basically were taking all the money away from South Kingstown and like communities. I know they had about a hundred million dollar total of what they were taking away from the, quote, "wealthier" communities. Where does that stand? Is that a backup to this education funding formula? Any idea if that's going to surface?
It, my understanding is the bill has been submitted. What could happen is the sub A on that bill could be this, this program. But they're, they're going to need to get it into legislation, so that it can at least go through the hearing process. But, if she were willing to accept a sub A on her bill, which would really be a replacement of her bill with new language, that would affect the proposal that the commissioner's put out. Either that, or the commissioner will have, you know, a prime sponsor that can submit the legislation on their own. Understand that the, the way the legislative process works is that everything goes through a committee, unless it's a, a budget article. And it can be held in committee, and it can be amended in that committee, or on the floor. So, you can have a bill that's really a skeleton bill, that turns into something far different than it originally started out to be, very late in the process. And, you know, as long as it gets through the, the committee hearing process. All of this will have to go through the House Finance Committee.
No other question? Scott?
Just in relation to, to Jim's question, my understanding is that her most recent statement was that she was waiting to see the details of the commissioner's proposal to make a decision about whether she would accept that as a subarticle on hers, or whether she was going to maintain the legislative initiative that she would, had originally proposed.
I saw that too. Tony?
Again, I appreciate also the work from town administration on the mathematical model. In the end, I, I think our role has to be how we show how it impacts education in this district. We need to look how we can project over those, perhaps not eight years, but at this, at least the initial three or four years. And I think we're going to need to start working on what data we need from the town to, to make those predictions. Look at what our educational system would look like over that period of time. And obviously, the gauge there will be student outcomes. We would never, obviously, target our students to, to fail. However, we would have to use mo, prediction models on where we think student outcomes would go as a result of that. So, I, I appreciate the work that's done. I think there i, is much more to go. I, I think, when I think of the Commissioner of Education, certainly what, what resonates with her would be student outcomes. And, and, and we're going to have, the burden is going to be on us to show where student outcomes are going to be negatively affected.
To, to speak to that, Kristen, you said you were going tomorrow. You had an appointment. I know it's tomorrow morning, and quick to say, but is there any, maybe you haven't had a chance to pull that together. But, do you think that you could show that it could affect, obviously, our, our outcome studies with, with the kids?
I'm generating a list based upon all of the feedback I've received. Certainly, there may be more people there than I. May, there'll be other superintendents who've requested this appointment as well. And so, I'm hoping to have lots of opportunity to not only share it face-to-face, but if not, forward my, my email. I talked to Carolyn Diaz a little bit today about it. And certainly, I can share, most recently, some of the, the opportu, the options we were looking at just last night. And what specifically that would mean for us in, in the, in the not-so-distant future. And to project onward, based on, on, this reoccurring cost, what else would be left for us, and, and what, what those, what the scenarios would look like. So certainly, I, I can do that for tomorrow. But in terms of discrete detail and projection models, the, the first bit of information that I think I would need is I'd need to hear from, from Carolyn and the commissioner, if they were looking to a, a static model, where this is what our, our E-Wave number is, and we're based on a certain census and valuation year. Or if that, this is going to be a fluid model over time. The conversation I had with Carolyn today made me think that it was going to be a fluid model over time. But I, I would like to hear that, and be able to ask, ask questions of it. So there, there's going to be a lot of conversation. I, I also know that Carolyn was mentioning she's doing a presentation for the Association of School Committees. I thought she said it was this coming weekend, but it could certainly be the weekend after that. So that might be another opportunity. I'll get that date tomorrow. March 20th, a week from Saturday. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Because, yeah, I was going to say, you know, we've, Steve had this, this, the information put together last week for some of the legislators. And just talking about this, just amongst the council, you know, we were saying you should go up there. And, and several of the legislators, starting with Don Walsh last week, and Mike Rice, you know, come forward that they would set up a meeting. But as Steve has always said, you know, we can look at the numbers, but the educational component has to be part of it too. So it's good that you're going, obviously, to this meeting and this other, with the school committee meeting, to try to pull that, those factors together. And then go in and look at, again, at, at where this formula came up with it. I think that's a great thing. And that's what we've been kind of talking about, piecing this, these two components together. Because, obviously, we're, there's going to be a lot of communities like us that are going to be complaining, but they're going to be looking for solutions. So, I think putting the two of them together, and I think even Kristen, you were saying earlier, that they are looking at the, looking at the median income from the year 2000, that they, oh, well, maybe there is a mistake there. So there looks like there might be some grounds here. So between what Steve has put together, what you're coming up with with the educational component, you know, to piece that all together and get up to the powers that be, including Gordon Fox, and, and not just Deb just, I, I think everybody needs to hear it. And Piva Weed, Senator Piva Weed, needs to hear about it too. So, again, once we get that all together, I think we should, it would be a great synergistic effect.
I agree.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Cal.
I, I just wanted to make a comment. And it, it seems like by taking the money from the communities that are achieving, I, I can understand that, what they're trying to do by giving it, giving it, giving the money to the communities that are underachieving. But at the same time, I think Kristen, you just mentioned that the commissioner is unveiling teacher evaluation, administrator evaluation. And this is all based on student achievement. By taking funds away from us, that's going to drive the achieve, the student achievement down. I mean, if we can't make up the difference. And as Steve very eloquently put it, mediocrity among all school districts is where we're going to get with all of this. So, if we're going to be, on the one hand, evaluated based on our achievement, but on the other hand, they're going to take the money away, so we can't achieve at that level, what's the un, what are they trying to get at here? You know, I mean, I can understand trying to get the underachieving school districts to a better level. But, at the same time, it just doesn't make sense. Maybe I'm missing something here. But, I don't know how we're going to maintain the level of achievement, and the, the evaluations of the teachers and administrators based on the student achievement. And keep the, and not have the funding to keep our levels up. So, that's my commentary.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
And by the time that we get those evaluations out, will she, will Deb just even be in the state of Rhode Island to see what the results are of this whole funding formula? That's a question that I think of too. Tony, did you have something?
Would you like me to ask her that one?
Yes, I would like to know that. Yes, I would like to know. Tony, go ahead.
If it is, if it's okay, can I switch topics for a moment? Because I wanted to see if Alan and Steve had any updates in regards to OPEB and health insurance as it pertains to the school system.
Sounds like more bad news coming.
Yes. Okay, let's brace ourselves a little.
Alan's got a question, the answer from Tony.
Okay. You still finding that, Alan?
Uh, no, I'm all set.
Thank you.
Okay. As far as the OPEB, Tony, that study should be in shortly. The 168,900 that you currently have budgeted will be sufficient. And that is part of, I think you, you may have 170,000 that's budgeted for the 10, 11-year. The unfunded liability will be going up. But, the fact that they had 23, I think it was 23 retirees, John, as far as the number of people that retired last year, as, as, as of June 30th, 2009, that drove up the unfunded liability a little bit. But the 168,900 is still the, the number as far as the annual required contribution. So you're in good shape on that. There's no spikes that will be there. Based on that plan, the actuary has said that there could be some volatility in the future. So that's something that we have to be careful of, just based on the, the numbers and the way they fluctuate. So, for the next two years, that 168,900 will be locked in. Okay. So that's on the, the OPEB. The, let me just get to the healthcare.
While he's getting to that, the, one other thing that the Auditor General has put out a report as of today on municipal pensions and, and OPEB fundings. And, we are one of only two communities that have established the trust fund for the, for the OPEB purposes. And, we are really in the forefront in terms of being able to address those issues and to meet the accounting standards that have been established for it.
What is the other community, Steve, that?
Town of Warren. Town of Warren.
Thank you.
I think there may be a few others, but I, I haven't looked at the report yet. But I, I know in talking to some of my colleagues, that cost spikes as far as since July 1st. So, the claims have picked up. I think what you have in the budget is sufficient, but it's going to be very close. Your stop loss, we have been on a prospective basis. So it is a change in the way we do business there. As far as, the, the other thing that has helped this year was that we have started to use some of the grant money to pay for healthcare costs. And that was about $100,000. Without that, you'd probably have a deficit in the current year as far as your, your claims, because they are running at 11 and a half percent. So, that has helped out. That will be there again next year. Next year, we're planning on around 125,000 in, in that category. So that's something new that is in there for the first time in the current year. Current year, it's only for six months. But next year, it'll be for the full 12.
Alan, in regards to West Bay Collaborative, what are, what do you understand are the efforts for cost containment, say, in regards to prior approvals, mechanisms, looking at utilization of tests and pharmaceutical products?
I really couldn't tell you, but I could ask the question as far as that's concerned. You know, I would say it would be, I don't think they're really involved in that.
The question you asked, it would be the, the scope of services that you have in the policy would guide that. What West Bay is acting as is an administrator or a pay agent. They're receiving the bills and they're paying them. They're not looking at that service. But West Bay is looking at a pilot program to look at wellness programs. And we're looking at the, the potential of, of, of looking to be one of the...
Six communities, and, and that would be funded through a, a grant from the Rhode Island Foundation, hopefully. However, that, that's just town, it's not school. So, but anyway, we'll see how successful that program is. And if it is, it would be something that would be, you know, certainly offered to the school department. But, couple of things, Tony, just to, to give you an idea, as far as West Bay, with those 9,000 members, what we were able to do was to go back to Blue Cross last year in March, and to renegotiate the admin contract. So at the time, we were paying $38.58, $38.50 per employee, per month. And we were able to get that down to $28 per month. And basically, what that did was it saved the school department $82,000 in the current year. It'll save you $92,000 next year. In addition to that, we bid the stop loss. Those savings are around 90,000, of which the school department gets about 70% of that. So that was 63,000. So, those were all win-win situations by being part of that group. We're able to save some money. And all those things happened after the budget was adopted. But, we needed those savings in order to offset some of the claims spikes that we've seen. So, all in all, current year, the surplus is probably going to be within $100,000 of the budget. Next year, right now, I'm projecting about a $50,000 shortfall. But I think that, that'll all be driven by the claims.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that answers your question.
It does.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, a couple of comments on, a few of Steve's earlier comments on, on the state situation financially. And I think we all know that the economy is going to determine our future. Steve, on the charts up there showed roughly about $2.2 billion of the next five years of projected deficits. There've been some folks hoping for an economic turnaround. And I might mention that those five years also include almost a compounding of a 3% growth in revenues to the state. So, it's the spread which is killing us, and especially when the stimulus goes away. It's that spread. The expenses are just climbing much faster than any turnaround in the economy that's projected at this current moment. So you've got to remember, it's the spread. That's really what counts. And the other comment too, about the state budget, is that the safety net part of the state budget is closing in on 50%. That leaves state aid, education, and pensions as the next two areas that the General Assembly, the Governor, after going to look at. There's really no other money. And, lastly, Steve mentioned, for your homeowners here, I don't know when you're going to get your notice, either this Friday, this weekend, early next week, but 850, 900 million dollars, a billion, excuse me, 100 million dollars. So let me start all over again. 850 million dollar is the projection that we have lost in our tax roll. And frankly, being in the business, I think it's closer to a billion or more if you try to ask anyone who's tried to sell their home. And, we're looking at price levels that take us back to 2003, right through 2006. And if you could think for a moment, of the thousands of homeowners who bought new, maybe put down 20%, borrowed 80%, or people that refinanced their homes, banks were pretty tough even then, but again, probably brought them up to 75, 80% of, of debt. And just think about this now, that the average person at 17.7% down is going to be looking at, on paper, from the town, a wipeout of their equity position. Think about that when you put this budget together. I think you know where I stand. I still think you're pretty liberal with your spending. But I really appreciate what Kristen's done tonight. But these homeowners are going to feel very poor next week. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the council or the school committee? Nope. Hearing none, then I will move it out to the public comments. If anybody from the public would like to come forward. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Rae Samosha, and I live in Peasdale. First, I wanted to say thank you very much to Mr. Alfred for putting in the work as far as the state funding formula is concerned. I don't think, I can speak for myself, and for the people that I've spoken to, I don't think anybody is under the illusion that we're going to stand to gain money from the state anytime soon. But I think, when we saw the formula, we even saw inequities. And I don't have anywhere near the background you have, the financial background. But, looking at Barrington, and seeing that they were going to receive 3.7 million dollars, I think, and we stood to receive 3.5 million dollars, they have a median income that's $20,000 more than ours. They have, if you went by the, I think it was the free and reduced lunch, they had a 3% free and reduced lunch. We have a 13% free and reduced lunch. And the superintendent, and Mr. Ashat, shared with me that with the transportation budget, we have a $3.5 million transportation budget. And Barrington, because of their geography, has a $500,000 transportation budget. So, even just the, as a layperson, we were able to see that this wasn't a fair funding formula. And, I don't have anything written in front of me, but I really appreciate you taking the time to look at that, and hope that our elected officials will, will do the same. And not just say, you know, that it is what it is. Because I think that you have an obligation to us, as a community, to, to make sure that we're getting the most that we can, even if that means we're going to lose. I think we understand that we're not going to come out of this a winner. I think we understand that we're not going to come out of this a winner, but how about we lose as least, as possible? And secondly, I wanted to speak to you tonight because I'm hoping that the school committee maybe could shed some light on something that I heard today from what I deemed to be a credible source. I was wondering if you've been in discussions with the Compass School about leasing the Wakefield School building?
No.
No? Okay. Maybe I'm totally off base here, but I wanted to put it on record that as a community, we've been told that the options for school configurations for next year are still open, and I hope that's true. This is not a done deal, no decision has been made. And as far as the Compass School or any other charter school, if they are looking for a building, we've got a vacant school on South Road. I think Mr. O'Neil has spoken to that. If, it would be a win-win situation, we could generate money for the district without displacing 300 Wakefield School families. The other thing is, in following these meetings over the last several years, I wanted to speak to the school closing, whatever school it may be. I've heard a lot about making decisions based on community values. I can tell you that I've lived in the community my entire life. My father was a physician here for a number of years. My mother was a nurse at South County Hospital for 25 years. My parents actually moved us from Narragansett to South Kingstown because of the school system. I graduated from South Kingstown High School. I graduated from the University of Rhode Island. I chose to raise my family here because of the school system. I also believe that our property values, although they may be going down, are directly tied to that school system. I think families move here and live here because we are known for quality schools. I'm a subscriber to This Old House magazine. They had a study done of the top 10 communities, old house communities, to live in the country, and one of the determining factors was the school system. And that is what makes a great community. So, I was wondering, I don't know if you can share this, but I was wondering if you could let me know how long each of you have lived in town?
15 years.
Yeah? Mr. O'Neil?
18 currently, and summered here for about 15 years, 10 years ago.
Yeah.
20 years.
18.
Yeah.
27.
Yeah.
I think it's been about 20.
Okay.
Eight.
Eight.
About 17.
18 years.
Okay. And, and I know you're not residing in town.
I wanted to respond to the, to the, to the Compass.
I just have two more sentences on what I have to say, and then you, I'd love a response. My thing is that closing a school that has educated South Kingstown students for 100 years most certainly does not seem like the community values that I was raised with. That's it, thank you.
Okay, I thought you said two, I'm sorry. So, the last time that I recall speaking to the Compass School was in September. It was as a result of the fact that we put out a bid to lease the South Road School. They had, had previously been somewhat interested in that property, and so they didn't bid. And the school committee asked me to give the director a call and find out, you know, why. You know, we offered a tour of the, of the facility. We expected them to be somewhat interested, they were not. The response that I received at the time is they were considering building, and that's the last that I've heard from them, quite honestly. I, I think that they're, from what was shared with me, to me, by the director in the fall, they're, they're not interested in retrofitting an existing school building, that that wouldn't meet its needs. And I, I have to be honest with you, South Road and Wakefield are the same size.
Only except, I think the Compass School, and I don't, you know, I think that they are, I'm not sure how, how to put this, but sponsored by an environmental group, is that correct?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, I know very little about the Compass School.
Okay, so the, the situation of being on the Sagittucket River and having the Sari Sanctuary, the River Classroom, I think would be very appealing to a school like that, and that was only where it, the information seemed plausible. I appreciate you saying that.
They've not contacted us. We've not identified that we would be closing a school, so I don't know how they would even...
That's where that was extremely concerning, how you could...
But they've not contacted us, and we haven't, I haven't spoken to them since they asked to be put on our no-school cancellation list.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would check with your credible source, probably, next time.
Last year, I did tour the Compass.
Your credible source, I would check next time, if they are credible. Just be careful, that's how misinformation gets passed around.
That's why I came up here to clarify it, actually, so I'm, I'm really appreciative that it was clarified. That's why I came up and asked the question. I didn't say that this happened, that I knew this happened, I came and asked a question. Yeah, thank you.
I did tour the Compass School last year when it started, and I spent a couple hours there looking at the facilities, and you're absolutely correct, they are basing their curriculum on that, and they're currently in a, in a very tight location, and I know they're looking at expanding beyond, if they raise the caps on students, which is being discussed in the General Assembly, so that was part of it too. And by fate, Rhode Island being Rhode Island, I actually saw the director this past summer at a wedding of mutual friends, and we kind of talked, so, you know, he, he knows how to get in touch with us, and Kristin's talked to him, but nobody...
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate your honesty.
Any other questions? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Go ahead. Oh, this gentleman in the front, and then the gentleman in the back.
I'm Roland Benjamin, talked at the school committee meeting last night, talked at different budget hearings here in the past. There's, there's some fairly major decisions, more so than usual, happening this year, based on what I, what I keep seeing as a lot of what-ifs. Even, even the, what I consider a major decision every year, which now sort of pales the idea of a tax increase, sort of on autopilot, is, is, is a considerable what-if, but more, more significantly, we're talking about $926,000 of, of what-if cuts to, to revenue source to the, to the school budget. That's based on a couple of things. The COLA legislation that may or may not happen, whether or not the phase-in of, of the education funding formula happens in 2010 fiscal year, whether that 468, which I realize that, that's, that's not the total cut divided by 10, of course, they're accelerating at the first eight years, that's a bizarre thing. Mr. Lord mentioned the, the $350,000 possible offset that, that's there. I, I would, and then Steve had mentioned a few things like using the 2006 tax base year. Those are all things that I would suggest should almost, could require legislation or should have legislation submitted already, if not resolutions from the school committee to, to request legislation. I, I would, I would say even the, the most simple one, having a peer review, which you Why, why can't we submit a piece of, a resolution from the school committee today, or in the next school committee meeting, on the next agenda that says, "Request this peer review right, right now." Do any, there, on every single piece of these, we should have a resolution that should request our, our delegation to put forth, put, submit the legislation to look at this COLA adjustment, if that really means something as, as significant as, as all, the decisions we're talking about right now. So, so those are our first couple of things. We're basically going to make a decision based on these massive what-ifs that we don't know about. And there's plenty of things that we can be doing in the short term to try to, try to, you know, alleviate some of that stress. Then, then there's the other things that I talk about seemingly every year, I think, but the, we talk about the healthcare. You mentioned an 11 and 1/2% increase in, a spike, you called it, I think, in claims.
Claims are running 11 and 1/2% ahead of where they were last year at the same time.
Okay. That, that number, does that include claims that go into the stop-loss?
At this stage, there are no claims that have exceeded the stop-loss.
But, and that, and I, I've heard the number 6, 7% in, over several years, so this is a spike that, that we're seeing right now?
On the school side, yes.
All right. So, I, you know, we've talked about this every year. I would say, let's budget for what is normal as opposed to what might happen, what if. Because when we budget for what might happen, we end up with a $300,000, or $400,000, or $500,000 shortfall that, that sort of instigates some of these very difficult decisions. The, at this point, with some of these types of things happening, I would, I would recommend taking every line item in, in budget from school and town, and look at every single spending item where we were under budget, and, and, and that line item becomes the next year's budget, and every item that we were over budget, we go back to, to, to the old numbers, and I'm talking all the way down. Think we should be looking at the attrition numbers with a, a sharper pencil to say, all right, we had, we had 23 retirees this year, we have 22 eligible retirees, is, is $500,000 the actual savings we're going to realize when they retire, or is it 550? We're talking about tens of thousands of dollars here that mean the difference in some of these decisions. Being able to be put off at, at a minimum, if, or eliminate it altogether if we can make some significant structural changes. Then I think we've got to, we've got to start talking about these long-term effects that, that bend these curves. You know, I, I came up here several years ago, talked about my experience with some, some different types of healthcare that I provide for my employees. We haven't offered HSA eligible plans to, to, to the town employees or the teachers or anything yet. Those things have made a significant impact across the board in, in my business, in businesses across the country, and in public, in the public sector where they've been employed, to the point, to the tune of about anywhere from $8 to $900, or to $1,000 per employee. That, that type of thing, if we talked about this and implemented this type of option three, four years ago, when, when we started talking about it, and we mapped against the same experience that I've had in my, my business with 70 employees, or mapped against the same experience that the state of Indiana's had with 20, or 30,000 employees, we would be on a different trend here. We'd be talking about millions of, $4 million in surplus savings over the last four years, $2 million in operational savings next year. Those are the numbers that close this gap that we're talking about. This, this, even the $3.8 million, whether it's fair or not, we can close that with, with some of these longer-range plans. All we need to do is be able to look at these types of health plans. There's a couple other things that, that we can be, it's been implemented in the manufacturing community for the last 20, 30 years, is the sort of idea of lean thinking and rooting out process waste. These are things that have to happen, you may, there's a, there's a sort of a pioneer, you're laughing, I think you know...
I have a little bit about 86 seconds.
Yeah, there you go. These can happen at any process level, they don't have to happen on a shop floor. There's a resident of South Kingstown, there's a pioneer in this, in his own, you know, he built a, a, a manufacturing facility, or a manufacturing operation that's very successful based on these principles. He lives right in town. He's, he's now working with the state to help find efficiencies, to root out weight, process waste in the state. That can be done here on a long-range plan, and that would, that would basically enable us to take every single employee that decides to separate at one point, whether it's retirement or voluntary separation, the spouse leaves the state for another job, they leave to take care of their kids, whatever. Every single, every single one of those opportunities is an opportunity to, to take advantage of getting rid of some of this waste. I, I think these are the types of things that, that have to be happening, and right now, we're, we're sort of rushing into a, a decision that, that, or we may make a decision that, that is based on a lot of what-ifs, without taking any of these steps forward. So, I think with that, I'll just end. I don't think I have any, any questions about this, but I think there's some, some significant things to consider here, so.
Do you want to respond to the dates of the legislation, with me, with the legislators?
The legislature's calling, I was just going to have, we have something to have out to the panel.
Hi, Bob Trager.
I'm sorry, I'm just, for a second. Some dates of the legislative, Ellen just wanted to point out to you that, I think we're looking at the 29th and the 5th, so...
Open meeting's here, or the?
Yeah, we'll probably be meeting here with the legislators, he's definitely...
Kathy, I didn't offer the 29th because Alan was not going to be available, so we've offered that and the, the date in May. I haven't heard back from the legislators at this point.
Will there be specific legislative requests that they would be presented with, or we have to generate?
It's just a work, it's just a work session at this point, but that's something that the school committee, if you want to... I think you directed it towards them, something that they might want to consider during the school committee meeting. But we are meeting, I think I just wanted to point out to you.
Yeah, I just wanted you to know, Roland, that, you know, we have been in constant contact with the legislators, and we are working on getting a joint meeting together, so it's not something that the town council has overlooked.
Bob Trager. Well, I, one thing I want to say, because someone already mentioned it tonight, was, and I've heard it before, was that there's a perception, people do move to a community because of the school system, there's no doubt about that. I wouldn't denigrate Narragansett's school system, my wife would be pretty upset with me about that one, but if you were to sell a house, a, a school system does add cost to a community. Our tax rate, I mean, to sell the same house in South Kingstown, and to sell the same house in Narragansett, all things being equal, same plot of land, house, everything, you're going to get a lot more money for your house in Narragansett because they pay a lot less taxes. So, there is a downside to, if you will, overfunding programs, schools, whatever, in your community. So, that being said, I don't have a lot else to add to that, but it, it does affect the value of your home, and not always in a positive way. And on that note, I mean, South Kingstown over the years, if you want to compare it to, and I know you guys hate comparisons, but what else can you do? You have to compare to other communities. And the numbers I have are from the 99, 2000 year to the 2006, 2007 year, but I only picked three schools. I picked Barrington, South Kingstown, North Kingstown. And I charted the popu, the student population growth over those six or seven school years. Well, Barrington's student population grew 10%. And their per pupil increased spending grew 32%. North Kingstown's population, student population changed 2%. And their spending per pupil increased 45%. South Kingstown's student population during those years went down 6%, but our spending per pupil went up 70%. And that's a huge disparity compared to other schools. Sorry, that's just one set of numbers, there's a million numbers, I'm not going to give you any more numbers. But, you guys are throwing numbers up there, and most of them are pretty small numbers. You're cutting, from what I see, you're cutting stuff from kids. Every little thing you cut on there is something a kid can't do now. I mean, you can't get pencils for the school. I mean, the superintendent said that's a new thing, they've never had to do that before. Well, my kids have come home and said, can you send in tissues? They don't have tissues, can you send in this, can you send in this? And that's fine, but I do believe it's been going on for a while. So, in my opinion, I mean, there's really no useful conversation that can be had about this whole budget unless you're going to address cutting labor costs. I mean, and that doesn't mean, you know, laying off everybody and slashing their salaries, but there has to be an approach to cutting labor costs, because if you look at last year's budget, at the end of the year, it was level funded. Am I correct, it did stay, stayed level funded? But if you look at, even though there were 25 FTEs gone, and most of those were teachers, and that's a substantial amount of payroll, the total payroll and benefits for full-time employees still went up. It didn't go up a lot, but it still went up. It was more than you paid the year before. So, those people were taking a bigger chunk of the budget than they did the year before, even though 25 people left. And I assume, I haven't analyzed these numbers, but I assume that's going to be the same here too. And I assume that's going to be the same every year until that issue is addressed, because any business who has employees has to look at labor costs. And I, obviously, not everyone in this room was involved in the last contract, but, you know, other communities have revisited. I don't have anything against any teachers in this community, I like them all, but they still are labor, and they, they have to face the fact that they are eating up the pie. And, you know, somehow, you guys have to address that. And if nobody mentions it, I really think you're wasting everybody's time. And if nobody mentions it, I really think you're wasting everybody's time. And if you don't think so, I don't know what you think. I mean, you know, cutting, uh, not being able to buy pencils for the kids, I mean, that's ridiculous. Why even mention it? I mean, that pales in comparison to what the labor costs are.
I just. I just had a comment, um, where'd it go, Bob? Yeah, um, the early indications that I have from, uh, Narragansett, they're currently $8.51 per thousand, um, fire departments included. They're looking at about a one, one and a half percent increase in the property tax. Let's call it $8.60. And as Steve just pointed out, he didn't give you our per thousand number, but early estimates are, that will be about 1440, 1450 with the, um, residential aspect per thousand and another 45 to 50 cents for the fire department to match Narragansett. So, we'll be $15 per thousand versus, in South Kingston versus $8.60 in Narragansett. About a 70% difference.
Numbers like that need to be qualified. Because the number of properties in South Kingston, about, probably about 14,500, maybe 15,000 parcels, to approximately 7,000 in Narragansett, the average value in Narragansett's role is almost equal to South Kingston's. So, the base itself is higher based on a lot of waterfront homes that have got far more than what the average value would be of a home. See, those numbers, the, the mean would be different than the average. So, if Narragansett has a role of similar size to South Kingston with lesser government requirements based on the population differential of, uh, two to one, uh, it is going to make a difference as far as the taxes are concerned. Yes, property taxes on an average home in South Kingston are higher than they are in Narragansett. But demographically, the two communities are not going to be the same based on what the, uh, the, the distribution of where the taxes are coming from. And they're, they're going to be much higher where you've got one and a half to three million dollar homes.
But I would respond to that with, uh, their reval last year brought them down to about, um, what, 4.5 billion? We're going to be about, uh, about 4.3 billion.
Yeah, then that, that'll be just where we are too. So, they, they were at 5.1, we were at 5.1.
Yeah, so I, I think it's very apropos to bring up, uh, $8.60 per thousand because they've got the quote same capacity. So, that's, uh, I'd, I'd call that fantastic economies of scale. Well, they do. And, um, both communities are around the 20% mark for, uh, uh, homes that are owned by out-of-staters. So, so my numbers stand.
I, I think you should clarify, Jim. I think there's a lot of in-staters that own houses in Narragansett that don't live there also. So, uh, it's not just out-of-staters that own in Narragansett and don't go to the schools. There's a lot of people in Providence or Warwick or everywhere that would own like a beach house in, uh, Narragansett. So, I think they do have less residential, um, less residents using the schools than we do.
Enrollments that are dramatically different. Um, and, and so, I, you know, we have essentially twice the enrollment.
The actual numbers are 1,460 current year for Narragansett. We're roughly 3,500. Uh, obviously, they shouldn't, you know, they wouldn't have the economy scales that we do. Yet, they're still doll- still $8.60 per thousand. It will be over 15 per thousand. Both towns' commercial numbers are around 10 and a half, 11%. So, it's a very small, uh, change in the numbers.
Hi, Bob Hackey. Um, since we're self-identifying and quizzing people about where we're from, I'm a lifelong resident of South Kingston. 1976 graduate of Wakefield Elementary School, 1984 graduate of South Kingston High School. Have two parent, uh, two children at, uh, in the South Kingston school system. Wanted to share, um, three things with you tonight. Just, uh, just a quick response to Mr. Benjamin's point about, um, health savings accounts. Um, exercise caution. Um, they are a interesting vehicle, particularly for young, healthy employees. Um, if one does not have a full complement of young, healthy employees, they can control your costs as a town, but they'd likely do so by shifting the cost to the chronically ill and older. So, um, just tread wearily on that front in terms of thinking of that as a magic bullet. Um, there aren't any magic bullets and I, I again compliment Steve and, and the superintendent for a really impressive presentation tonight. Uh, disheartening, sobering, any other adjectives we want to throw out here. Um, two requests. I have one request for the town council. I have one request for the school committee. Um, for the town council. Um, I am a homeowner. I'm also a parent. Uh, I, I would echo, uh, Race's point about the importance of schools for the community, um, both for our property values and for a sense of who we are. Um, I know how difficult this cir- this set of circumstances is for you. And I know it's probably not fair to ask you to, to send more money in the direction of these folks. Um, but I'm going to ask you to send more money in the direction of these folks. Um, because, um. What we're really, what we're desperate for, I think, in the short term, because I, and I think a couple of folks have really made this point. There is tremendous uncertainty. We don't know. Uh, and the absurdity of this entire budgeting process is that you all have to make a decision long before the Pooh-bahs in Providence decide what they're going to give to you. And your decisions are predicated upon the Pooh-bahs' decisions, which will be decided on June 30th at midnight in some senate lounge. Uh, so, uh, we all know how that's going to, going to play out. Um, the reality is, we need a tourniquet. That, that's essentially what I'm, what I'm asking for. Um, these folks have already cut substantial amounts from their budget. Um, the options we're looking at here are so unpalatable that they've, they threaten the sense of who we are. Um, they threaten the viability of some core functions here. Now, will the kids go to school? Yes, they'll go to school. They're going to a different school system if these things pass. Okay, and so what we need, and I think if we present this, and I, and, and I, I absolutely respect Mr. O'Neill's point about, yeah, there's going to be some surprise people looking at their tax bills next week with the revaluation. And, and I don't want to pay, personally, I, I'm not saying, you know, um, sign me up. I can't wait to pay more in property taxes. However, I think if you pitch the issue something along these lines, these are the costs that we're talking about of not increasing in at least the short term, our property tax. We're going to compromise what we do and we're going to do it on the backs of our kids. Um, I think folks would be sympathetic. They're not going to be happy. And I'm, you know, I'm asking you to vote for a tax increase in an election year. And I, I realize that they're probably, they'll come and cart me off here momentarily. But, uh, but, but that, there is good reason for it if we make the case about what we get for the money we spend. And I, I think honestly, if you look, I mean, years ago, in, in the, in the, in the era before, um, we had Bob Hicks as superintendent and before we had Kristen Stringfeld as superintendent. Uh, this, this, the school department had, uh, some, some overruns. They haven't recently. If you look back at their, at their budgets, they've been living within the budgets that they proposed for years. And hats off to you for that. Okay, so that's, and that's not easy to do, but you've done it. Um, now we've got a real problem because we are bleeding out. That's the tourniquet analogy because this is bleeding out. When we're talking about having a high school library with no librarian, you cannot put it any other way, but we're bleeding out. Now, across the street, we've got a school that's been there for 100-plus years. Not that particular one, although sometimes it feels like it. Um, I, I sit in some of the classrooms and look at the radiators I sat next to as a child and, you know, wonder what's still in there that I might have tossed along. Uh, but, uh, we, we have, uh, we have issues here. I realize we haven't made any decisions about what school's on the chopping block here, but there was discussion last night, lively discussion. Uh, and it certainly would not be, um, a shock to find Wakefield Elementary School on the list of proposed cuts. Um, that would be tragic in more ways than I can tell you. Uh, it would be tragic because it takes a big chunk of this community, a centerpiece of this downtown area, a school that's a public school in the downtown, has been a part of this community for more than a century. And that changes it. It's a neighborhood school. And if we close Wakefield and we bust the kids elsewhere, what we're left with are three probably very fine schools, but we're moving away from the concept of the neighborhood school where kids walk to school. And so that's different. Um, and so I'm begging you as a town council to consider something that would stop the bleeding. And that may require helping these folks out with some money that they don't have right now and might not anticipate. Now, as for you folks, you know where I'm going with this because I went there last night and I'm coming back. Um, Wakefield School, it's just not an acceptable option. And I, 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 part of this is emotional and I'm going to own that because I went there, my kids went there, my wife works there. It's all truth on advertising. I'm, I'm not a disinterested party. But having said all of that, when you look at the fabric of this community, this school, and frankly, all of our elementary schools, not just Wakefield School, Mattoonik School, West Kingston, Peastale, they're all high-performing, high-quality schools. And the problem I've got is that when I was watching the presentation, and I saw it last night, and this is not, this is just an observation, it's not a criticism, I'm looking at deck chair, deck chairs on the Titanic. That's the only metaphor I can see. We're moving things around. We're cutting a little bit of this, a little Feng Shui. No, I like it better over here. No, let's move the flowers over there. We're, we're going down. Okay, and, and I think they're the solution. So, I want you all to come together and have a moment of, of, of rapport here where you can talk about what's in the best interest of our kids in the town. Because what's in the best interest of our kids in the town is not closing Wakefield School. Sure as heck is not closing All Day K, which we fought hard for and is making a difference in terms of our special ed and is making a difference in terms of student learning. And it's certainly not getting rid of elementary orchestra and it's not getting rid of the intramural sports that are keeping kids out of trouble after school. And it's not getting rid of the student assistant counselors because we're all worried about drugs in the school. So, why don't we really make things, you know, we're going to go with the route of Providence, have the police officers help people find the drugs, but I don't think we want to go there. Uh, and, and so, wh- what we're, what we're, what we're looking for here is something to stop the bleeding. And we desperately need you to work together on this. And I'm begging you to set aside the rhetoric and I'm better, begging you to work together and find a solution that will get us through this period. We need to stop the bleeding this year so we can take a breath and plan, knowing something about what's going to happen with a funding formula and everything else. Right now, we don't know enough. And if you make these cuts as a school committee, you're acting on the basis of incomplete information. It's not your fault, but it's still incomplete information. You need more time. There's only five people in this room who are going to give you more time. They're sitting over here. So, I'm begging you. You've got to work together. Because the alternative is that we are going to seriously erode the quality of life in this community. Our schools are too important, taxes are important, it's all important. But the bottom line is unless you guys work together, we are not going to address this. And I'm begging you. Don't posture, don't take positions just because, you know, it's, it's convenient to do so. Um, it's easy to do that. I'm begging you guys, put your heads together, work together, and you're going to both have to compromise as a school committee, as a council. But we need to do it because it's in the best interest of the kids and it's the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Uh, Jonathan Daly-Labelle. Yeah, brother Hackey. I guess I'm not, I think, uh, there was a lot of information shared last night. And by the time I, I made it here, um, you know, the presentation, even if it had gone online today, I wouldn't have had a chance to review it anyways, but, um, it hadn't been online as yet. So, I'm, I'm not really going to get too much into the details, um, of that. I think there'll be, uh, it sounds like we've at least pushed a decision off for, uh, two weeks. I would, I would think at least two weeks. Um, so there'll be kind of more time for that. But I guess what I would ask, um, I guess what I'd, I'll, maybe I have a question for each as well. Uh, I guess what I'd ask the town council is, um, you know, when you set the stance earlier in the budget season uh, based upon, uh, town manager's recommendation, um, you know, did you realize that if we kept going further that we may be looking at the closing of an elementary school? And so as you, you know, think about it, um, whether you answer tonight or at some point in the near future, you know, is that what you would really want, is to hold firm on that number if it had that drastic an, an impact?
We certainly did not know, uh, how much was coming from the school system when we started, when we did the budget. But we had a good clue that the state was out of money and our budget, our municipal budget had not gone up for many years. And we had, you know, that there just isn't that much money around. So, we realized it was going to be a tough year. We realized next year is going to be even tougher.
Carol, go right ahead. I, I don't think any one of us wants to close an elementary school. I, I think that, to think that we sit here and that we would like to do that, I don't think anybody on, in, in any seat up here would like to do that. And, uh, I don't think we anticipated any of this as far as closing a school. I mean, I, I just don't, I don't see how you could suggest that because certainly we wouldn't want to do that. We're in a position where, as many of you that are here tonight saying you want the schools to go, uh, as, as they are, the minute we suggest raising taxes, we'll have a roomful of people saying, "Don't do it." So, I mean, you know, we're between two sides. And I, I'm just informing you what we're up against. I mean, that's what's going to happen the minute we suggest any kind of raising of taxes. And it's happened before. So, you know, everybody has concerns in this. So, we have to try and think about all sides. And that's what I do up here and try and make the best, uh, decision for the whole community. And I'm sure everybody up here has that, has those same issues.
We, um, did not have that information from the very beginning, Jonathan. Um, it, it is like a balancing act. We've actually discussed Monday night's town council meeting to push some of our meetings out. Um, we do have a joint town council, school committee meeting. I think it's the 14th and 15th. So, so that we can get more data basically from, you know, the, the general assembly, the governors. So, we, it, it's a process. We're still collecting data and trying to make decisions. But again, we're also trying to balance the safety of, with our police officers in town, our emergency medical services. So, it's a process that we're following. We're still gathering data and moving forward. And I can echo what Carol says. None of us, I'm sure, want an elementary school closed. Um, we did go through it with South Road. Um, I think it's very important that we keep the public informed with dates and when those final cuts are going to be made at the school committee table. I know there's been public forums. Um, and I think just keeping the communication and keeping the community aware of where we're at in the process is key here. keeping the community aware of where we're at in the process is key here. So...
Okay. I don't know if I misspoke.
I was going to add, can I add on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I add on to what you were saying too, Ella, is that the town is already getting a tax increase. I mean, it's already in our budget. I mean, it's already there. And of course, nobody wants to cut an elementary school, and we didn't know the depth of it, we didn't know the school formula, funding formula was coming down the track. And it came up pretty quick. And that's, you know, that's something else that was added to it. You've got to go back and look at what the municipal was hit with. We got whacked a few months back. We also had the motor vehicles, we got some of that money back. There's a lot of different variables that are coming in on this town, and nobody wants to see a school closed. I sat here on the town council when I saw my own child's school closed. So I've been there, done that, bought the T-shirt, I know what it's like. But as Ella says, this is a process, and it's continuing on, and we're getting more and more information. Will that funding formula go through this year? I hope to God not, but it looks like it probably will. And our legislators aren't strong enough in the numbers in all the suburban communities to stop this train from coming down the track. I applaud all the people from Wakefield Elementary coming out and trying to support their school, or whatever school it is to close, because when South Road was closing, it was all my neighbors who were out there in the audience doing the same thing. I caution that just, if you have, you know, information that comes forward, I remember Wendy Bucci saying about telephone line, and there was a lot of misinformation that was coming out, and that was very, very concerning back then, and it got a lot of people up in arms and a big uproar, when it really wasn't the fact. That's why it's, in this digital age and computer age, things can get spread much quicker. So pick up the phone, call the town manager, call the superintendent, call one of the school committee members, just so we can keep things on an even par here out there, because we don't want to get people all riled up and upset over nothing. So again, it's a difficult thing, as Carol says too, I want to echo what she says, because we're a balancing act. Wakefield Elementary School is a very, very important issue, as it was to South Road Elementary School, but I've got the elderly people in the town that I have to think of, I've got the 9.8% unemployed in the town of South Kingston that we have to think about. There's a lot of variables that this town council has to look at. It's a policy decision on the school committee's part on what they're going to be doing. And again, it is a process, that's why we're waiting for more numbers and more information to come out. This is why we've pushed back a few of the dates, but it's a, we're trying to give you a big-picture view of what we're dealing with here on the town council. It's not an easy process, and that was a big-picture presentation of the numbers that are coming at us. And when you add, increase the taxes, and you want to add an increase to, you know, you say $400,000, that money is, you might figure it out to the sense how much that is an increase, but that stays in the base, year after year after year. So next year, we have that in the base, and then we have to cover that more with less money coming in. So I mean, just try to realize what we're doing with the budgets. It's a long-term process, but you add to the base every year, and we have to keep covering that with less revenue, so more taxes are going to be added on. We won't have anybody moving into the community with young children to go to the schools if we keep increasing our taxes like that. So again, it's a big picture that we have to look at, Jonathan. So again, let us continue on with the process, we're trying the best that we can, and there's probably not another school committee or town council that works together as well as this school committee and this town council has, because you can see it in all the other communities ripping them apart, and we try not to do that here. That has been one of the things that I'm most proud about on being on the town council for the past almost eight full years, is the communication that goes on here, the questions that go on, the communication between the manager, the past superintendent and the current superintendent. We are really working very hard for everybody's benefit in the town of South Kingston. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I think the town has really taken the most serious hit here when we dropped police officers, when public safety should be number one in our minds, when we don't fill a couple of those ranks. That gives you an idea of the level that the town has reached here. The town's part of this budget is roughly, will be a quarter this year, with the schools taking up three-quarters. Hopefully, you can see my concerns with what's coming at us with the deficit next year, because no matter how the pieces come at you, do we divide it that way? $3 the schools have to find, $1 for the town? And I think you have to appreciate what I've done here for 10 years, because I predicted all these numbers. Calculators aren't Democrat or Republican, they just tell you the truth. When that spread I keep talking about keeps widening between spending and revenue receipts, I don't like it. Believe me, you and I are in the same business, I'd love to be busy. This is not fun. But the town has really taken it on the chin here. We don't have any more to give in the town yet. When this budget comes through next year, they're talking about, what, a 3.8% education aid drop? I would suggest that if the numbers that I see come through, that's going to be double, possibly triple. I mean, we don't, we won't have to worry about the education funding formula. It's just, there's no money to give out, and I bring up that safety net for a reason. That's half the state budget. That only leaves, what, $800 million of school operations, that operation money that they send out to the municipalities, $400 million for pensions, there's nothing else. There's nothing else. So yes, it's a balancing act. We don't want to get into a three-to-one ratio. I wish the economy was going to improve, but there's nothing early on the horizon that's telling me any different.
Okay. I don't know if I misspoke, but you know, I will say that in the last budget cycle, it was looked at, you know, that the next level of cuts very well could be an elementary school. So I'm not trying to say, and I don't think that I said, that any of you would relish closing a school or like closing a school, but I guess what I was asking, that now that there's more of an understanding in the community, you know, we're even in the newspaper, which, you know, I love how the world works, that, you know, this is tomorrow's paper, yet I'm holding it today, and it's, the headline is "Wakefield School, I'd For Closure." So it seemed like, you know, that was, seemed to be the theme last night. And, you know, I guess I was just trying to look for feedback, which I think there was some there, but you know, really just feedback, okay, moving forward with this new information that you have, real concrete information, would you still have, you know, a hard-line response for, you know, no more money now that this information's out there? Okay. I guess my question for the school committee, and I think that the town council would be very interested in this, is that I hope that there ends up being a very open and honest evaluation, you know, full pros and cons, including the capital improvement information that's available, that I believe the town puts together on the cost of maintaining each school, as well as tying in issues identified with NESDEC. Because I, as I've looked at both the preliminary NESDEC report and the CIP report, there is some variation in there. You know, one glaring example to me, which I don't know what the number attached to it is, is that in the CIP, there's no mention of any asbestos removable at Curtis Corner Middle School, but in the NESDEC preliminary report, there was talk about in three wings of Curtis Corner Middle School that the flooring is asbestos and it should be removed. So I hope that there will be a very thorough evaluation of that, looking at if you, I love the school system as it's set up, I would love to see it exactly, stay exactly as it is right now, but if you do end up deciding, or the town council decides that the taxpayer is absolutely strapped and cannot spend, you know, anything more whatsoever, that you do try and save the most amount of money if you do decide, you know, if an elementary school does have to close. All right. I guess just following the process last year, seemed very reactionary, there was a lot of nerves about this referendum that could come down the pike, which did come down the pike, which was going to cut our school system and gut our school system and hurt our school system, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, so a lot of tough cuts were made. I feel reactionary. You know, if you think that's not the right word, you know, you can certainly, you know, it's been talked about, that's just my view, you know? But there was a referendum, and, you know, 60% of the community went out and voted not to cut any further. So the community said, I mean, this is like, please, I just, I don't get it. You know, I know that people will come in and say, "Don't raise my taxes at all," and "Cut my taxes," and whatever, you know, whatever reasons that they have. And most, you know, a lot of them are legitimate, there's a lot of legitimate concerns. But the fact of the matter is, is that at that referendum, the town, I don't know if our finance director would have the numbers, you know, could have saved their tax bills by $100 or, you know, whatever on average, by cutting 1.3 million, and 60% of the community that showed up to vote said, "Don't cut." And now it seems like we're kind of almost in the same place, and I don't, you know, this personally, I guess I've said this in a few meetings, I don't really like how this process started, because it was started under, stated as being an educational issue and not a budget issue. But in any case, it feels a little bit reactionary to me, and I almost sense that, you know, many of our leaders are trying to head off another referendum. But I guess my take on it would be, is that this, I see 12 leaders, not including our administrators, and our administrators, you know, are incredible. It's, I don't know where we'd be without you guys. But elected leaders, there's 12, and it seems to me like there's one that seems to set the direction, says this is the direction we're going in, this is the tack we're taking. And this is a general statement, so don't take it like I'm saying this exactly. But too much, too often, it's like, okay, let's go in that direction. And I'm sure there'll be some comments on that, and I'm certainly open to talk about it. But what it looks like this year, and even more moving forward, is let's not have a referendum, because there might, the community might cut the budget, let's just cut it up front. Thank you.
Jonathan, I guess I have three reactions. I think it's fair to ask elected officials, where are we? I'm not sure, I expect, I think it is true that all of the members of the town council didn't get elected last time in order to cut elementary schools. Even Jim, who has an enthusiasm, well, no, I'm going to say this, Jim and I have, on occasion...
This person on the end.
No, 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 I'm, I'm...
That's all right.
Okay.
I haven't been offensive yet.
It's my policy, Jim, it's our policy.
I have the ability to do that, we're still playing within the boundaries here. Jim and I have disagreed on almost everything, including whether the sun came up this morning. I really don't believe that Jim would, by intent, let's move a bunch of elementary school students around and let's kind of rip the heart out of the middle of downtown. I don't think that that's part of his plan. Nor did anybody on the school committee decide that they wanted to get elected in order to kind of randomly cut a couple million dollars out of the school budget every year. And that was not part of the game plan. I would challenge, the second thing is, I would challenge your assessment that we are where we were last year. I don't feel like we are in any place like we were last year. Steve has frankly outlined for us millions of dollars of difference that are not coming to the town of South Kingston. And whether there are modifications in that, the bottom line is that South Kingston, if there is a funding formula, we are guaranteed to lose money. For all of the funding formulas that have been offered over the last 10 years, and there have now been a pile of them, the best that South Kingston has ever been projected to do is to be held harmless. And that presumes that the state has millions of dollars of new money not allocated to anything else. We aren't there, and we are not where we were last year. The unemployment in the town has risen, the economy has continued to deteriorate, we have the projections about where we are going to be, not just over the coming year, but over the coming years, and Rhode Island, it is clear, will far underpace the rest of New England, and what they're saying is, we will underpace the rest of the country in terms of our exit from the current economic situation. I don't feel like that's where we were, and certainly, we did not have the projection of a funding formula that would remove half a million dollars a year from state aid to the town of South Kingston. A year ago, there was not the projection that we would lose the excise tax on automobiles, so that the town side of our town, that budget takes a $2 million a year hit. So I think the conversation that we had last year about people's willingness to support the budget is a different conversation than we are in today. The third thing I would say is, I think that one of the healthiest things that could happen is frankly for Jim to offer another couple million dollar cut to the school budget, because I don't think the town would stand for it. And I kind of revel in Jim being rejected by the voters. I think that's a good thing, it's a clear statement. I recognize I'm tipping right up to the edge.
No, you are, yeah.
Jim's okay with it. He knows that's how I feel about it.
Stop saying it, name the gentleman on the end, we try not to use names.
I think that this is one of those times where a pure level of democracy would be really good, where all of the voters came out, had said something about the importance of public education to the future of the town. So if there's a referendum, I think that's great, because the voters will come out, and I truly believe that the voters will stand with public education in the town of South Kingston, and they will reject, as they have rejected in the past, Jim's initiatives around cutting millions of dollars out of the budget. I would say that I'm not encouraging of efforts to add money to the budget. These are tough times, and the elected officials here are doing their best. I think the theme of balancing interests is really important. What that means is that whatever your vested interests, everybody's going to lose some because the town of South Kingston is losing some. Nobody's going to get what they want. We're all going to come up short, because the town is coming up short in terms of the revenue streams. I think that, frankly, Kathy's point earlier, I have sat on the school committee a really long time, and every year, I recognize just how long. And the quality of the working relationship of the elected officials in town is better than it has been in my 18 years on the school committee. These are elected officials who are truly doing their best together to come up with answers, even though lots of people will end up unhappy with the conclusion of that. The only way that everybody in town wins is if we can go get money from someplace else, and what is absolutely crystal clear is the state of Rhode Island has none of it. That if we think we are challenged, and we have, we are, I would believe, the best-managed town in the state of Rhode Island, if we think that we are in trouble, think about the other districts, and then look at the state which is essentially bankrupt. I mean, we have a governor putting forward proposals for a budget which are blatant holes. You know, "I propose a budget, and I hope those people go do something that will make it balanced." And that's, that's an interesting approach to budget development. But it is where we are, and I think that Steve has framed a perspective, and that is that we, in the end, the town doesn't have anything else for the state to take back. The school side of our budget does, and they have a plan to do it. And so in the end, this is up to the people in South Kingston. What are our commitments to quality education and to a quality lifestyle, not just for the children, but for the senior citizens and the business owners? We all are going to be far more dependent on one another, because we can't count on the state to come through. What they have done is to pull the rug. That's where we are. I don't think we're in the same place we were last year, and that's why this is a new conversation, very different conversation than we had last year. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Jim?
Rebuttal time, Jim.
Oh, not really rebuttal. Jonathan, there is no conspiracy here between myself and my four colleagues on the council here. Matter of fact, I'm... Matter of fact, most of our discussions this year, I don't remember one single time we were in agreement. So I'll certainly make that clear. I, and I stand alone here, I have no support whatsoever with my four members, no matter what I bring up now, over the past nine or 10 years. Which is too bad, because I had put forward a lot of suggestions, which, had they been followed earlier, and pension reform, things like that, we might not be in this mess. As for a referendum this year, I don't know. I played it all above board last year. I'm quite disturbed at how the school committee allowed, what they allowed in the community and within the schools to, how they went about their campaign. But be that as it may, we'll see what happens, what the school committee comes up with. Scott talked about the governor. I've got to tell you, you've probably seen, we actually had a visit from one of our general assembly members the other night. They're no-shows. I've written that in the newspaper, we're getting no help whatsoever. I don't care if we're a minority group, wouldn't you think that surround the urban area, go around the perimeter, team up with the Newport's, the Blackstone Valley communities, wouldn't you think we'd be a team? To fight the urban, to fight for balance? Nothing. They're no-shows, absolutely no-shows. How you keep voting for the five of them in this district is beyond me. Imagine the people that have put us in this hellhole you all keep voting for. What would you do with your own home if that happened? What would you do with a business? It's beyond me. But anyway, there's no conspiracy here, Jonathan, whatsoever. So, and you also, I don't know, maybe you didn't get the answers you wanted, I happen to be a neighborhood school kid, I grew up that way in Providence, I would not want to close Wakefield School, but I'll tell you, I want South Road open, and I want Curtis Corner closed, I've said that recently at meetings. And I'll work hard to see that that's, that happens.
I just want to add to Scott, I don't want to have a referendum, I just want to save the $10,000 and, I just want to go on record and save that. Oh, Ella, oh, no. No? Okay, before we go back, did anybody else in the public have something to say before we go back to a second question? This lady first, and then this gentleman second. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Michelle Little, South Kingstown resident, taxpayer and principal of Wakefield Elementary School. I want to thank all of you for your incredible hard work and the difficult task that you face. We're all in an unenviable position. I would like to just reiterate what Bob Hackey was saying about hoping that there is a way to bide some time because of all of the uncertainties that we face, and not make any decisions that are too drastic, too soon. And I also would like to build on what Scott was just saying about people coming together and working together, and I'm truly not trying to be too Pollyanna-ish, but I do believe in the power of the human spirit, and I really see it every day at Wakefield School, and I know that it is real in our community, not just in Wakefield School, but in South Kingstown. We have an incredible amount of strength in our families, and I believe that we have a lot of talent that we could tap. I know that there are a lot of parents that are in the school every day, helping out in myriad ways, who have a lot of expertise, who would be willing to come to the table and be creative. Several years ago, I had an opportunity to visit the schools in Reggio Emilia, Italy. Some of you may have heard of them, and they are now world-renowned. But in that town after World War II, and I get choked up every time I tell this, but forgive me, the parents took the tanks at the end of World War II, and they sold the tanks, the scrap metal, and they started a universal preschool program for their children, because they wanted to have a strong future for them. And those preschools spread throughout Italy, and now are world-renowned throughout the world. We really, I know all of us want to honor our children and their future here, and as much as I know, our wonderful resource certainly is in our ocean and our water. I didn't see the ocean until I was 18, I grew up in Midwest, so I totally appreciate it, but it's the people. It's the people in South Kingstown who are our strength, and I really hope that we can harness the energy that I really truly believe is here, between our teaching staff, our administrative team, our town council, our school committee, our families, the University of Rhode Island. Rhode Island's a small state, and we need to get our act together, and our legislators need to step up. But we, I really believe that we can, we can make a difference and we can make it work, but we don't have a lot of information right now that we can count on. So if there's any way to stretch it a little bit, I don't know if that's possible, so that we can come to the table together and be creative, and I certainly would want to be part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Warhaven, I'm your neighbor right here on High Street, and I'd like to piggyback some of the thoughts that have been brought out today, this evening, and again, ask both councils to ask more of the citizens and to ask more of the parents, of the students. I think the, I think there are creative ideas that could help us out. I had mentioned last night, I don't think I communicated it very well, as far as janitorial services at the high schools, you have tons of students there, let's use slave labor. It sounds funny, but I'm a glass half-full type of guy, and in these economic conditions, I think it's completely conducive to go to the citizens of the town, the students of the schools, and the parents of those students and say, "Hey, you know what? We're all gonna have to suffer through this." And maybe the students will have to sweep the hallways, maybe the parents will have to provide some transportation or some extracurricular activity, we're gonna have to get rid of the late bus. You know, that's a shame, but that's a problem that any parent could help you solve. And as far as the roaming nurse, the floating nurse? Roaming nurse, you may use that. We have a 911 system at our disposal, and when I look at the 67K, to have a nurse at our disposal for an emergency, I'm sort of like, it seems, there's a duplicate there. Do you see that? I don't know the legal ramifications of that, but that's the outside-of-the-box type of thing I'm talking about. And obviously, I'm concerned about the school being closed, living right here on High Street, and I'd like to, I'd like to voice a concern that closing that school is such a permanent solution to what we don't know is a permanent problem. I mean, obviously, these budget things are projected into the future, but it's conceivable that things will turn around. It's conceivable that we'll lose students. It's conceivable that we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, so why choose a permanent solution? Because I'd love to hear your opinions on, once a school's closed, does it really get reopened? Are you really, three years from now, gonna open it back up again? That's the concern that I have, that we're gonna pursue a permanent solution to a variable problem. And again, I think this is a unique opportunity that we can go to our citizens and say, "Hey, you know what? You might have to pay some more in taxes." They're not gonna like it, but they're not gonna be confused by it. They're gonna go, "Yeah, I know, I know. I read the papers. We're not getting the money from the state. It's gonna have to come from this town from here on out." They won't like it, but they'll understand it, and I think they will back it up. And as far as the parents, when you go to them and say, "Hey, there's not gonna be a late bus, so you're gonna have to make arrangements, call your neighbor, piggyback, carpool." I don't think they'll like it, but I think they'll understand it. I think they'll go, "Yeah, I know, I know, it's a crappy economy. We can't afford the late bus anymore." Maybe even for the all-day kindergarten, you know, first hired, first fired. It's great to have all-day kindergarten, but you can't get blood from a stone. They're not gonna like it, and they're gonna be pissed at you, but they're gonna understand it. And don't take it personal, they gotta lash out at somebody, and you're right in front of them. But you know what? I'm gonna stand by it, and I'm gonna look 'em straight in the face and go, "Hey, you know what? There's nobody becoming a millionaire around here as of the last couple of years." So, so, don't, I'm concerned that this is the easy way out. Dig in deeper, ask more from us. Say, "Yeah, you're gonna suffer in this too. Every citizen of this town will suffer because we don't have the money." And they won't like it, but they're gonna understand it.
Thank you. I think it's, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Rob Cagnetta. I've been a resident of South Kingston for about 17 years. I was at the meeting last night, and again, I was very impressed by the effort that's put forward by everyone. I just wanted to sort of give the five reasons why South Kingston should be more in taxes than most communities. One of the main ones, and I think most people, hopefully they're aware of it, but we actually have a nationally recognized park system. We have one of the best park systems in the state, in this, in this town. It's one of very few that were recognized as being exemplary in the services they provide. Second, we have an amazing community dynamic and a setting unique to all of Rhode Island communities. We have one of the most amazing downtowns that is the envy of any modern planner, to have the diversity within its own use base, in terms of having residential, commercial, and schools sort of mixed in the same area. We have sidewalks in most areas, and we have one of the top educational programs in the state, there's no question of that. I didn't move here for this, but now I have a child that's one year away from starting a Wakefield Elementary. So for 14 years, I was paying taxes and not using it. Now I thought, maybe I could. We have a diverse economic base. We have beaches, we have factories, we have manufacturing, we have small business, we have a fantastic base. We don't rely on any one thing that can make us sink by going under, be it manufacturing others. And we have great beaches. We really do, you know, provide sort of the, everything from tourism to other uses that sort of, you know, we complain a little bit that we get a little more volume in the summer of different kinds of folks, but in the winter, we have a lot of students, so there really isn't any housing that's fallow for the year. You know, and I also know that we have, you know, a greater geographic area than Narragansett. We have more students than Narragansett, so I don't really think it's fair to even compare us to Narragansett, because I think there are a lot of things that make us better. And I think there's a lot of reasons why I was willing to pay more to live in South County in the first place. I couldn't afford my house when I bought it for $115,000, which is kind of insane now to think that. But, you know, it really, you know, says a lot to me, and it says a lot about my community. I'm very happy to live here. I've seen my street go from folks that were having their children move out of the house to now where we have a street where we have a half dozen homes that have children, you know, under five. So I know just our street alone, we're gonna have 30 students that can't walk to school now. So I do have a lot of concerns about gutting sort of what is the core of our community, not just schools, but our park systems and everything else, and I think if people want all of these things, and if they're not using all these things, then they should live somewhere else, and they should pay less taxes somewhere else. But I think that this community is more than just schools, it's more than just the businesses, it's more than any one of those things, it's all of these things combined that makes South Kingston much better than most. I do not want to move, I do not want to go anywhere else, but I might have to, if I can't really see that all those community benefits coming back to us. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you look like you want to go, so I don't, I don't want to hold you up. And then Eileen in the back, if you want to come in. Eileen, you're next.
Thank you, Joe LaVolsdale. I just want to thank Kathy for what you said earlier about taking a comprehensive approach to what you have to do here, because if you do raise taxes inordinately, you'll be chasing people out, or people will not come in to this town because of the taxes. So I was glad to hear that tonight, because I would not want my taxes raised any more than necessary to fund the programs and the schools to the necessary degree or the town side as well. But what I wanted to just briefly touch on, if I could, actually, it's a question to Mr. Alfred, is if you recall last year or so, there were discussions about consolidation? I was wondering, are those still going on, or do you know of any further possibilities for more consolidation in savings?
In South Kingstown?
Well, with surrounding towns, or...
We've got a few things going. I think the real issue, Joe, is that we've got so much that we've done in advance. I mean, I went through the litany of the different things that we have, you know, in terms of what we've already regionalized. We're still looking at some simple things like marine services, but I don't see anything that's coming down the pike that's gonna be a large dollar amount. The main concern that I have in terms of dealing with consolidation is there needs to be a fiscal note done in advance to make sure that it's an appropriate solution. Now, a lot of people have talked about, maybe we should look at, you know, community dispatch of public safety. If the infrastructure costs necessary to build the system to be able to dispatch the various people cost more than the savings are, then it's not advisable.
Okay.
But at the same time, you can say, "Well, gee, isn't it great that they consolidated that service?"
Yeah, all right, so the bottom line is, there's nothing in the pike that would be helping us out right here now.
At this point, there's nothing that we're looking at that would be of a material value in terms of consolidation.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Kevin wanted to address something, I think, Kevin.
Joe, there is something in consolidation on the school side. I have been meeting with a number of communities now for, I don't know, three months, we have monthly meetings. The last meeting, John Rashat actually attended that meeting, we are looking at certain aspects of consolidation. There is some potential revenue savings. The one main problem is, a lot of them we've already done in this particular community. For example, North Kingstown's there, and they're talking about doing some things that we already do, so they're looking at a higher, higher dollar amount. But, you know, there are some things, but it's just, at the very best, I think we might be able to realize $75,000, which, obviously, that's why I go once a month on a Saturday morning, but it's not an earth-shattering thing. I think there's a perception in the community, especially what I call the talk radio bullet points, that consolidation is the end-all. But one of the things, especially with all the Wakefield people here, is consolidation means closing buildings. You know, when you go to the general assembly, when sometimes they'll come to these meetings, they'll talk about consolidation, and they'll all come in there, and at least now, they've started to understand, "But we should consolidate," and I'm like, "That's closing buildings." And the examples I always use is, you know, Central Falls is a one-square-mile town roughly, and right next door is Pawtucket, and right next door is Providence, and so on, Cumberland. Values in Rhode Island, home values in Rhode Island are very much depending on location and the schools you go to. So the analogy I always use is, if you're in Cumberland, right next door to Central Falls, and it makes sense to send that kid from a consolidation standpoint to combine those districts, and send that kid from Cumberland to Central Falls, that affects property values greatly. So that's kind of the big devil in the room when it comes to consolidation. We are in a unique position, we don't really have that issue in Narragansett and South Kingstown, a little more part of that, but that's some of the struggles that everybody deals with with consolidation. But it is something that on our own, the school committees in South County have been trying to do. I think somebody mentioned, I think Jim mentioned earlier, about getting together as a group, and that's what we're trying to do, and go to the legislators and say, "Okay, you know, I'll give you one example, textbooks for parochial schools. Okay, we'll still provide the textbooks, but instead of each individual community doing the textbooks, let us do it together as a group, pool our resources by the textbooks, and then provide a single service." Right now, what we have to do is get the textbooks, they come into the administration building, it's kind of chaos, and we gotta assign staff to it. Instead of doing that, having everybody pool it together, and then having one service, so we're getting some economies of scale. That's the good news. The bad news is, when I read the numbers, it's $11,000 to $15,000 in savings. So, but we are trying to do some things. Kind of a long answer.
All right, Eileen? And please state your name for the record.
My name is Eileen Riley. I'd like to make a couple of comments about things that were said. I think it's all well and good for everyone to think that the town council and the school committee gets along so well, so famously. I think that my personal, frankly, I believe that the school committee abdicated responsibility, and the town council took responsibility, took rights that weren't theirs with that infamous handshake deal. That was one comment about what has been said about how well you get along. I'm really glad you do. I'm not sure that when the charges- I'm not sure that when the charter was set up, that they expected, I think that the belief was that the school committee should have their rights, and it should be separate, and that the town council should have their rights. That's just a comment. It's long gone by the board. The handshake deal has been in place. I don't think it's something that we should compliment anyone for. Secondly, anyone in this room who has a telephone and would like to call, there is a huge push right now to repeal the flat tax. I know everyone stands here saying, we don't have any money. There's money. It's what we're spending it on. And when I say "we," I mean the people upstate. And I think that if we have to, as a group, push other towns and other groups to go and demand what's the right, now excuse me, but I seem to remember there was stimulus money to improve education. Why are we cutting? Where is that money? And don't we have the right to demand it? And shouldn't you be the ones demanding it? I don't think we should be suffering so much, saying, oh, the state has no money. They won't give us any. It's their responsibility to do it. So I would say two things. I would say, go to the state and demand it, and I would also say, anybody who has a phone, call now and repeal the flat tax that is one place. You could get some money.
Thank you, Eileen. And I think, did you want to get up and speak? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Rosemary Galliani. On the list of some of the items that you couldn't touch was transportation. So this is, I know it's $3.6 million is the transportation, and I know that, so it sounds like it's mandated, but in other states such as Massachusetts, anybody that is using the public school system, the student is paying, I think it's $200, around that, per person to ride the school bus. So there is, was talking about being creative and thinking outside the box. That's just one option there. Thank you.
Could we get her name again, Kathy? Can we get your name? Rosemary? Is there any other comments?
My name is Carmelina, and...
Your last name, Carmelina?
Massiosio. That's why I only said Carmelina.
Don't be like Tom Clark.
And while I was home today, I called a couple of local businesses, and they are more than interested in offering some money to the Wakefield families and coming up with some money for us to save Wakefield School. So I was thinking, if we could raise some money, if you guys could raise some money, we could all get together and save the school. So that's what I was thinking. And it would be some, you know, a lot of money, and we could actually go door-to-door and, you know, solicit, you know, just get some money and do what we can for our kids. So...
Rosemary, thank you. Thank you for the idea.
... and Sweetie, all four big places in town, and they are more than willing to help.
Okay. Please come forward. State your name for the record.
I talked in June at the referendum, and I think my opinion is still the same as it was then. Mr. Alfred, I hope people listen to you tonight because you dealt with reality and what we're in for here, and I think it's nice that we talk about saving this and saving that, but this state is in tough shape, and it's not going to get any better for a long time, and I think we're kidding ourselves if we, you know, how do we save this? How do we save that? I retired last May, as I mentioned last June. I ran a business for about 25 years, and if I had somebody in my business come to me with a budget of $54 million and tell me that they found $1.2 million in savings, I'd send it back again and say, keep trying. I think that you've got to look real hard at what you've got. Doctor, you and I had a discussion last June about could or can or should we talk to the unions about this contract? You've got another year to run. I know that other cities have gone back early and opened up negotiation and gotten some relief. They're not oblivious to what's going on, and I think that, you know, the superintendent said, I can't touch that. I found out about $24 million that you can't touch. Boy, that's where I'd start. And, you know, I don't want to pay any more taxes. I don't have any kids in the town. I've lived here for 20 years. It's a great town. There's a lot to it, but I think we've got to get real about the reality of the economic mess we're in right now, and the things are going to change. Close one school, we might end up closing two or three by the time we're done. And does anybody want to do it? No, but that's the reality of it, and I think everybody ought to get in that boat right now because we'll have meetings like this until we're blue in the face, and we'll be talking about the same thing. So I think we need to get on with it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Oh, sorry, Jonathan, I forgot you had a second question. Everybody else? Has everybody spoken? Just want to make sure. Okay.
I just want to follow up just because there was some conversation back to me. I think I'm coming to the conclusion I need to take a public speaking course because I've made a couple of comments, and I'm hearing things come back that I don't think I said. I heard conspiracy theory. I didn't say that. That's not what I was thinking. What I was thinking is, is that there's 12 elected officials, and there's one that has a strong viewpoint, and then there's 11 others. And what I would say is, is that the one with the strong viewpoint, in my opinion, tends to set the agenda, and the other 11, too often, too willingly, in my opinion. Again, these things are things that can be talked about, and maybe I'm wrong, but that's my perception. So it's not a conspiracy. It's a question of, it's just a question of who's running the show, and I would think, you know, 11 to one. But, and I guess, and I'm just going to say again, just so I'm clear, and I appreciate very much, can I say Mr. Miller? Okay. I appreciate what Scott said, and I appreciate being able to say your name like an adult.
A policy we don't, it's the gentleman forth from the left.
Quite, yeah. Quite a other few people in the community use names tonight, and it's interesting.
It's a town council policy, Scott. We'll review that later.
Right, but people in the community have, tonight, used names, and it's weird how that gets, it only comes from me.
I asked that not to happen, and the gentleman let that move forward. So let's get that on the record.
Okay.
Jim? Said that it was okay to use his name. Yes, that's why I wouldn't let it go on.
Well, everyone was pointing, looking. Your mother's wife.
Again, I just want to make it clear. It was you who said to use your name. That's all I'm stating. Usually, when he first said it, I went, oh.
What's that? No, no, not at all. Not at all. I love it. And I guess I'll just, just to piggyback on, not so much piggyback, but I just wanted to say, I do appreciate what Scott had to say, but I guess I just want to say again, so it's not lost, don't cut for the one. And I know it's a different year, but I just, I feel like, in a general sense, my opinion is that the process feels similar, rushed. I'm not saying that it's the same times. And then just if the woman that came up, again, I know her name, but I don't want to use it, said that we should be advocating to stop flattening the flat tax, and I think that the number that I understand is that that's costing the state somewhere between $35 and $50 million a year, and it doesn't necessarily have to be raised, but it could just be stopped. And is that going to solve the whole budget problem? No, but it seems like it's a piece of it. And the flat tax, as I understand it, and, you know, I wasn't going to bring this up, but just since it was brought up, this is a good conversation, I think, to have with our legislators to get their take on this, because if we're going to get cut on schools, the flat taxes, again, as I understand it, benefits 4,400 of the most wealthy tax filers in Rhode Island, and actually, half of them are actually not even Rhode Island residents. So there's a lot of doom and gloom, but as that tax every year keeps getting flatter and flatter, the richest in our society are paying less, and I think that that would be very interesting. Nobody wants to talk about taxes, but I think sometimes leadership demands that there's talk about taxes because you can only cut so much. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hope Carol?
I would like to make a comment. Jonathan, number one, to suggest that any one person on either the town council or the school committee is controlling all of us is, at the very least, insulting to say that we don't have our own thoughts and go through the whole process of collecting facts and weighing the issues. I mean, we put a lot of time in. We put a lot of thought into all of this. To suggest that one person is controlling 11 of the others is just ludicrous, and I don't know why you would even suggest it.
I have to concur on that one, too. I think the eight years that I've been on the council with Jim, I think I've debated him every single, and by his own admission, that probably about 40 minutes ago, he said that everything he's brought up, that the four of us have completely fought against, and I just want to go on record and say that's absolutely true when it comes to the schools.
And Jonathan, one more time, whether it's conspiracy, whether you think I'm controlling the agenda, absolutely false. And I'd like to think that reason will prevail here, and I think you should know, which you didn't get into here, I think Steve Alfred and Alan Lord, not only with, I thank them for their expertise, but they are the best friends of this community. They are your best friends of this educational system, and when they deliver what they have delivered over the past few months and many years that I've been with them, they do it with absolutely sincerity. The accuracy of what they do is incredible, and they are worried and they are concerned. And if the four members of this council and seven members of the school committee have that same worry, rightfully so, because he does, and they do, absolutely a great job. So, believe me, conspiracy or me setting the agenda, absolutely ridiculous. I hope you're not using that for a political agenda, but this is absurd for you to even bring that up.
Okay. All right. Anybody on the school committee have anything? The council? I think the community is tired. Steve and Alan, they look tired, too. So I'm going to call, this meeting is adjourned, and it is at 10:51. I get you out of here earlier. I run a tight ship over here.